Finding a zoning board. Ms. Miller, if you'd call the roll, please.
Jim Chard.
Here.
Mitch Katz.
Here.
Deidre Stone is absent. Roger Cope.
Here.
Bryce Patton is absent. Judy Malika.
Here.
Gregory Snyder.
Here. All right. The first item is approval of the agenda.
Is there any changes?
If you want to make a motion.
Any changes?
Are there any changes from staff or anything?
Huh?
There's no changes.
Are there any changes from staff on the agenda?
There are no changes from staff. Do we want to change it?
No changes from staff. I think the majority of the folks in attendance here are for item 8B. So if you wanted to move that in the past, that's been a practice, but it's optional.
I say we just keep. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
What? Wait. I'd like to question you.
You can.
Please. Go ahead. Go ahead.
There's an item missing from the agenda which...
I think you have an old agenda, Mr. Chard.
Does everybody else have one that is missing that has C under legislative items?
Yes.
Yes. We got an email that was updated.
That's been updated.
Okay. I withdraw my question.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing no one opposed, the motion's passed. There are no minutes. At this time, anyone who would like to speak in the meeting, we'd like you to rise and be sworn in. And also ask that if you're going to speak, that you filled out the sign-in sheet.
Please raise your right hand by the authority vested in the notary of the state of Florida. Do you swear in firm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to have...
Hey, did we do the roll call? Yeah, we did.
Pardon? Oh. At this point, Mr. Strawn is here.
For the minute. He's fine. I don't know what he wants.
Yeah, right. All right. If that's noted, we just swore everybody in.
Okay, great.
At this point, we'll take comments from the public on any item that is not on the agenda. Any non-agenda item, comments from the public. Okay, seeing no one, those comments are closed. Move on to presentations. We have none and quasi-judicial hearing items.
I have a question before you read in the record for the attorney, and I meant to ask earlier. When the commission changed their rules on having to read their whole address, does that apply to us now too?
I'm going to say yes. I think they just need to...
So they can just say their name and zip code, save the time.
Okay. That's fine. Well, I'll mention that. Look at the rules. These aren't the rules. I don't have the rules.
Yeah, I gave you both sheets.
I don't see them. Oh, there they are. Okay, sorry, my fault. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the city of Delray Beach quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be permitted to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The board members, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not legally be made upon the personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the requirements of law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. Okay. Ms. Doster, would you read in the item 8A, please?
Yes, so state for the record.
Sorry.
Yes, state for the record. Suzy Rodriguez, senior planner. I would like to enter file number PG 182-2025 into the record. The request is a CBD waiver associated with a Level 1 application for Atlantic Crossing. The applicant is here today to present.
Okay. Do we have any ex parte? Mr. Cope?
Um, no, not specific to this item. No.
Okay. Ms. Malika? Ms. Strawn?
No.
Okay. I visited the site.
No.
None exactly to this, but I'm... Just as disclosure, I was part of the commission when we had the settlement agreement that approved the project, and so was very involved in it. And I did recently read it and was actually speaking with the mayor about it as well because of the light on Sixth Avenue, part of that settlement agreement. But just make sure it's all disclosed.
All right, thank you. Sir?
Yes, thank you.
On the floor.
Shall I state my name and address?
Name and zip code.
Zip code. Bryce Hall, 80205. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for your time this evening. I thought for the benefit of explaining the why behind our waiver request, I would take a moment just to talk about the project broadly. I know I heard some of you have visited recently. But here it is, the Atlantic Crossing project in its entirety. It's bounded to the south by Atlantic, to the north by First, to the west is federal, to the east, of course, is Veterans Parkway. And you can see that it's comprised generally of four buildings. Buildings 1, 3, 6 South, and 6 North are what we consider the first phase of the project, and those are complete. The second phase of the project consists of Building 2, 4 South, 4 North, and Building 5. And those two final buildings are really one building combined, although they're listed as two. Whoop, I went to the end. What happened there? I went too far. This is what the project looks today. As I stated earlier, Phase 1 is complete and occupied, and Phase 2 is under construction, starting with the southern portion of Phase 2. And what you see under construction in this photograph is the subterranean parking garage that will sit below Buildings 2 and Building 4 South. And Building 4 South is the building associated with the waiver request that we're making this evening. As you might expect, for a project of this scale, of two city blocks, when it was initially conceived back in 2013, as you recall, the concept was not that each building would be of the same architectural style, but various cohesive architectural styles, each one complementary to the other. And that has to do with the public experience of this very large, very prominent project here in Delray Beach. So what we're looking at here is a rendering of Building 1. And the architectural style of this building is what I would call coastal commercial. This is how it was conceived, and this again is a photograph of that same building along Atlantic Avenue as we discussed this a moment ago. This is Building 3. This was conceived to be the Alley's Beach style, that white stucco style that you're familiar with. Here it is today. Hampton Social, obviously, is a restaurant in that building. Finally, this is an image of the northwest corner of Building 6 North, which is an apartment building. And this was intended to be a coastal resort-type architectural style. And here's an image of how that looks today if you were to drive by it. And that brings us now to Building 4 South or Building 4. So when this project was originally conceived, this was the architectural style of Building 4. And this is what we might call a Mediterranean revival style. And what we're looking at here is the port cochere, which serves as the main valet point that serves the entirety of this project. This was the design when it began in 2013. And when our clients decided that we were proceeding with Phase 2, 10 years later, tastes had changed. And at that time, we came to sprab and proposed a revision to the architectural style that looks like this. And this we might call, I don't know, Miami Beach modern. You know, with the deep overhangs and the very clean lines. And when we presented this to the board conceptually in 2022, it was met with favorable response. Everyone thought this would be a really nice fit for the project and a great style for the town. When we completed getting through Technical Advisory Committee review and approval and went back to the board, taste had changed. Nearly two years had elapsed since our initial conceptual meeting. And when this style was presented again at that time, it was determined that it wasn't a good fit for the project any longer and that this style was no longer favorable for what I mentioned earlier, that cohesive, complementary group of buildings on this larger project. And in fact, the board members at that time said they actually preferred something closer to that original design that I showed you, that Mediterranean revival style. And so the team heard that feedback. And it's fun, as an architect, you can say this literally went back to the drawing board and revised the style of the building to its current form. And this, you know, is not exactly the same Mediterranean revival style that it was before, but it's what I would call a contemporary interpretation of the Meisner style of architecture. It does have some of those Mediterranean stylistic touches to it. And very particularly, you note the arch now form that exists again over that port cochere entry to the project. So this is that same view we've seen three times. And then this is the main, the primary elevation of that building facing north. There's a plaza between this building and the buildings to the north connecting this project with Veterans Park. And again, you can see some of those stylistic elements. And again, you see the arch form with the tile inlay there at the main entry to the project. I've gone through this description of the architectural style of this project, again, because it has to do with the public experience of this project. And our waiver request is related to three interconnected elements of the project that all benefit the public experience. And the first has to do with the architecture. So here again, we look at that port cochere form, that large arch with the tile inlay that is something of the front door for this project. Every person that comes by vehicle to the project to go to any of the shops or any of the restaurants at Alexa Valley will go to this point for drop-off. And you can see that the form of that arch is very specific, both in its massing and its proportion. Our request has to do with where that form, that arch form, meets the ground on the west side of the entry. And it's at that location that we have an encroachment into the setback of about 2 and 1/2 feet deep by 8 feet wide where it meets the ground. And the reason for that is due to the proportion of this arch and the importance of ensuring that the architecture is correct and it's a good experience for the public that arrives there. It's intertwined with that valet drop-off that I mentioned earlier. So in this image, what I'm showing you is in plan, the same thing. And I've enlarged it three times. If you look at the bottom right-hand image, you'll see that termination of that arch to the west where that form is meeting the ground. And you can see, as I described just a moment ago, that portion of the encroachment where it meets the ground, that 2 and 1/2 feet for approximately 8 feet, is completing the form of that arch. You may also note that that piece of the building where it meets the ground is immediately adjacent to the left curb of the valet drop-off. And you'll note that the valet drop-off itself, the lane width is 24 foot 6, which is just enough to have two lanes of stacking for valet. And the sidewalk to the east, where passengers will, you know, get out of their car, obviously, and the valets will be attending, is a little over 7 and 1/2 feet. And those dimensions are what I would call optimal or maybe the minimal that you want to have to have a safe, functional valet drop-off zone. And you can see that that arched form, as it meets the ground, being so close to that curb line, were we to try to adjust that location to the east, it would start to impinge upon what I think are some critical dimensions for the experience of that valet drop-off and for safety. I think this image does also a good job of showing in plan the richness of the streetscape at this location. You can see that there's a very deep tree lawn between the street, which is 7th, and the sidewalk itself with three large trees, much vegetation. And again, on the other side, the east side of the sidewalk, between the sidewalk itself and the building and the valet drop-off, the same. And you'll note that though there is a small encroachment there, it really has no impact on the amount of landscape materials that we're able to provide, or a very nominal impact for that matter. Then the final aspect related to this encroachment is that same form of the building, that termination of the arch where it meets the ground there next to the valet drop-off is the foundation for the stanchion, one of the several stanchions, supporting this public art piece, this Janet Eccleman tensile art form, which will be connected to four of our buildings. I've pointed out in the upper right-hand corner the point on Building 4 South, the building we're talking about today, spanning over 7th. And this particular portion of the building, where we have the encroachment, where it meets the ground at least, it extends where it's candidly over as well as you're aware, is the base of that piece that supports this public art that extends over 7th. And so again, the reason why we're asking for this, and there's the technical justification that I provided in my justification statement, but the reason really is for the intent of ensuring that we have an excellent experience for the public that visit the project. That's the end of my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we go to staff, we'll note that Mr. Patton's here.
All righty. So this request is associated with Phase 2 of Atlantic Crossing, specifically Building 4 South, which is the second building north from Atlantic Avenue. As this is a unified site plan, the product data is for the entire site. There is no modification to the use, the floor area, or the density in this proposal. A very brief background on Atlantic Crossing. The conditional use was approved in 2012 to allow the building height to increase to 60 feet for Buildings 6 and 3, and for the density to be increased to 40 dwelling units per acre with the provision that they provided workforce housing. The Class 5 was approved in 2014 for mixed use consisting of retail, restaurant, offices, and residential units. In 2017, a settlement agreement was executed between the city and the owner. This established that the 2013 LDR and the comprehensive plan are what is applicable to all the phases in this project. And then in 2017, a Class 2 site plan modification and waivers were approved to meet many of the requirements that were listed in the settlement agreement. Another Class 2 was approved in 2019 for the reconfiguration of the pedestrian plaza as well as the installation of this aerial art piece across Northeast 7th. And the last modification that came to a board was a Level 3 in 2024, which included the architectural elevation modifications to Building 2 and Building 4 South. The city received a Level 1 application for Building 4 South to modify some balconies, relocate rooftop equipment, add a restroom cabana on the pool deck, and extend the port cochere. Due to the extension of the port cochere, the applicant is requesting relief to Section 4413-F4A2 of the 2013 Land Development Regulations to reduce the front setback along Northeast 7th Avenue from 5 feet to 2 and 1/2 feet. Please note the waiver is what's under review tonight for a recommendation to City Commission, and the Level 1 request would be reviewed administratively. This code section states that buildings with non-residential uses on the ground floor require a minimum setback of 5 feet. The requested 2 and 1/2-foot encroachment accommodates the port cochere, the structural pier supporting the art installation, and the pool deck on the third floor. For clarification, let's see. Let me go here. So this is the pier that's right here that's going to be encroaching down to this column and as well as this second floor that's going to be supporting the pool deck. This, all in purple, is what's the encroaching into the setback, 2 and 1/2 feet. The approved streetscape adjacent to this request consists of an 8-foot sidewalk and a 10-foot-wide landscape area, or what we call today our curb zone. Within the 10-foot kind of curb zone, there's also bicycle racks there. The following are your waiver findings. It shall not adversely affect the neighboring areas. It shall not diminish the provisions of public facilities. It shall not create in any unsafe situations and not result in a granting of a special privilege. The board should consider the following. Is the reduced setback anticipated to negatively affect the quality of the pedestrian experience? Is the proximity of the structure to the sidewalk area anticipated to have an impact on any... on any public facilities? And does the granting of this waiver align with the broader LDR goals that support a superior pedestrian environment and connective pedestrian network? These are your board motions, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. At this time, are there any public comments? Any member of the public like to speak? Seeing no one, public comments closed. Does the staff or applicant have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal.
Or cross-examination?
No rebuttal.
All right. For discussion, shall we start with Mr. Cope?
Sure, thank you. Excellent presentation by Bug Carty, so thank you so much. Very, very complicated project that's, you know, that we've all been watching over the past seven years or so, however many years it's been. The answer to all the questions that have to be weighed in when we, you know, pass judgment on something like this is, to me, was no, that this is, this doesn't negatively affect the public. This doesn't, there's no special conditions that would be granted here that would be detrimental to anything, I think. The fact that it's in the landscape planner is pretty, pretty, you know, convincing that, you know, if it were on top of the sidewalk next to it, that that might be taking away from the public's opportunity to walk down that sidewalk, but it's in the planner. So I always appreciate, you know, proportion and the rhythm of the art that he's alluding to with the entry. I find it very supportable. You know, the drive through the port-cochere possibly could have been narrowed up a bit, but, you know, I understand everything that's in play here. There are many factors that are in play, especially on that corner. I find everything to be very supportable and can't wait for the the public art to fly through the two buildings on the west. I had no idea that it was being anchored back to this corner, this part of the port-cochere, so that's pretty exciting stuff. It's a world famous artist, you know, that we all can't wait to see the flickering up there. Anyway, that's enough. I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Ms. Monica.
I have no comments. I would be in support of the waiver.
Mr. Strong. Mr. Patton.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
I missed it. You know, yeah, I agree, everything's internal. If you, if the closing of the space makes it more, you know, makes your customers and patrons uncomfortable, that's on you. I will, I can't wait to see the artwork either. Let's hope it, let's hope it gets done.
Mr. Chard.
I'm wondering if it impacts the two-way traffic on Seventh in that area? I think I heard you say that the lanes are not going to be narrowed on that.
Yep, correct. There's no impact at all on Northeast Seventh. That's unaffected at all by this waiver request.
Okay. Secondly, I understand the piers. Why the, sort of the eight-feet continuation of the reduction in the setback? Is that supporting the pool above it?
Yes, it is. It all is supporting the portions above it. The eight-foot portion of it, that part that's touching the ground, has to do with the massing and the scale of that arched form as it comes across. Were it to be more narrow, it would result in, the proportion would feel a bit off. And so that's why we're making that request, to allow that form to complete itself at that scale and meet the ground as it does.
And there was some mention in the staff write-up of the limits imposed by the settlement. Could somebody explain that to me, please?
In the sense for the 2013 Land Development Regulations? Okay, so the settlement agreement specified that the 2013, what was applicable to when it was approved back in 2013 is what would be continued for review until the project's completion. So the 2013 Land Development Regulations and Comprehensive Plan is what we as staff look to review when any modifications are coming in until the full Atlantic Crossing is completed.
All right.
Mr. Katz.
Sure. I'm in favor of the change. I do have a question, though, that the only concern, I guess, you'd have is the archway being so massive. Is it going to be almost uninviting for people wanting to park their cars there? Because that's, that was crucial, was the flow, the traffic flow that people utilize in that valet. Otherwise, it makes the project very hard to park and, you know, deal with traffic. Just, I'm just curious if that's been thought of, or, you know what I mean? When you're pulling in, is it going to be very welcoming?
Sure, we like to think that it would be, you know, that there's the form itself, the sides of it are open, as you might be aware. We've brought the openings all the way down to grade to ensure there's plenty of natural light flooding into that space. Of course, the space itself at night will be lighted in the ceiling. So I think it will actually create a very welcoming experience. And in fact, that's part of the importance of this request, is ensure that that, what I would think of as something of the front door of the project, is something that feels a part of the project and is welcoming.
That was the biggest, a big concern back 100 years ago.
Yeah, 100 years ago, right.
Was there's no surface parking, you know, there's no, you know, people feel, people feel comfortable just to be able to park somewhere.
Yes.
You know, in general, I think, like I said, I'm going to support it. This is what happens, as Mayor Gluckstein said at the time, when you put 10 pounds of something into a five-pound bag, is you're going to keep getting these changes and changes because they're trying to fit so much into it. But we are here. We can't go backwards, so I am in favor.
May I ask one more question?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Has the landscape plan now been changed to accommodate the fact that it's sort of half the size it was going to be?
Yes.
What, what sort of changes have you made?
If I could maybe go back to, it's very nominal in nature. It's really just removing of a few plantings. This image shows it quite well. So this image shows the landscape planting plan and plan, obviously. And if you can see where that pier is touching the ground, the one that we're discussing there, we've just basically removed some ornamental, you know, shrubs from what normally be in that area. So it's reduced the amount of planting, just nominally at that particular location. But the rest of that landscape plan, as you see, including the 10-foot planting zone between the street and the sidewalk, remains as it was prior to the waiver request.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think, I don't know how to say this. I completely understand the requirement for the space for the, for the valet parking aisle and all of that. Why don't you make the building smaller?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a thing to do, of course. You know, again, it was, we were being, we were responding to the Sprab Board and their comments regarding the appearance. And I think at the time that we were doing that, we didn't recognize that we had made the encroachment. And, you know, going back in time to that time, you know, in 2023 when we're making those changes, that would have been the thing to have done at that time. Now, of course, the building is designed around that scale and that proportion, and so that's where we are today.
Okay, yeah, no, I support this. I think it's reasonable.
You want a motion?
If we have a motion, please. Motion, what, you want to, go ahead, go, go for it.
Mr. Chair, and staff had no conditions, right?
No.
Okay, great. I'd like to move a recommendation to approve the City Commission of the waiver request for Atlantic Crossings, PZ 182-2025, located at 777 East Atlantic Avenue, to reuse the required front setback from five feet to two feet six inches along a portion of Building Four S, adjacent to Northeast Seventh Ave., associated with a Level One site plan modification by finding that the request meets the criteria set forth in the LDRs.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Cope, second by Ms. Monica, and Ms. Miller, if you would call a roll, please.
Jim Charn?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Dujra Strong?
Yes.
Roger Cope?
Yes.
Price Patton?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, the motion passes.
And I would just ask of you that you pushed the city, I understand that you gave the money already for that light, that you pushed the city to get it done.
Okay.
For safety, that needs to get done.
Understood, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. We can move to. We could have.
Good evening, board members. Alexia Howes, Senior Planner, I'd like to enter for the record file number 2025-109 and 2025-110, and the applicant is here today to present.
Okay, do we have any expartee? Mr. Katz.
I do. I met with the applicant, attorney, land use architect. I met with a couple neighbors, the farm, their farms, the Crusoes. I met with, I spoke to, actually, a couple of my neighbors, family members as well, since I live so close about it. So I think I've got that all covered, and then obviously it's all the letters as well. And I definitely drove by every day because I have to.
I drove by and took a look at the property. I did hear from the applicant's attorney, and I do have this petition.
I, I'm familiar with the area. It's close to my home, and I drive by it quite a bit, and I went and made a specific trip to visit it. Mr. Patton.
None other than the petitions and letters.
Mr. Strong.
None, just the letters.
Petition and letters. I spoke with Mr. Scott, the attorney, and drove by the site today, visited it, and spoke with some neighbors.
And Mr. Cope.
I had a phone message from Mr. Scott. I was unable to return it, I apologize. I read the petition and all the various emails that were presented to us.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Matthew Scott. I'm a zoning attorney at Greensboro Martyr with a zip code of 33446. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Just before we get started, is there a petition that was submitted?
I think he meant stop report.
It's a letter signed by.
There's a petition to deny proposed, it's signed by.
Signed by a number of individuals.
It was in the backup, perhaps? Okay, well, I guess we can get a copy, and we'll talk about that.
Yes, you have a copy of all correspondence received up through yesterday. We were receiving up until the last minute before the meeting started, but all.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, that's all. Back to it. So we're excited to be here tonight. We've been working on this project for over a year. I'm joined by Bradley Miller from Urban Design Studios. We also have our traffic engineer, Andrea Trautman, and our landscape architect, I believe, is here. And my client, Mr. Fazio, has joined us in case there are technical questions about car wash operations. As you can see on the screen, we are seeking a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board on our Level Four site plan application and on our conditional use application for a car wash. Before turning it over to Bradley Miller, I just wanted to mention one thing. The chair went over the quad edge judicial procedures. We do have neighbors here. In speaking with the attorney for Sierra Vista about some of their concerns, and in hearing from my client, who met with some of the neighbors, I just wanted to make sure tonight that there's an understanding that we're not seeking to rezon the property. It's frequently the case when a conditional use or special exception application is applied for, when, when a change to long vacant land is pursued, that the neighbors get really concerned. And I, and we totally understand that. It's sat vacant for a long time, and we're respectful of that. But it's important that we understand what sort of the legal underpinnings of our application are. And so I just have a case that I found to be helpful because there seems to be this conflagration, this mix-up between a rezoning and a special exception or conditional use application. Those are sort of synonyms. So this case from Rural Newtown versus Palm Beach County, which was decided by the Fourth District Court of Appeal, which oversees this area, it clarifies that. It says, "In a rezoning, the burden is upon the applicant to clearly establish the right to the rezoning. A special exception or conditional use, as opposed to a rezoning, is a permitted use to which the applicant is entitled unless the zoning authority determines, according to the standards of the zoning ordinance, that such use would adversely affect the public interest." And so with that, I'll stop with the legal jargon. It's just important that there be an understanding that this is not a rezoning, that this site has been general commercial for quite a long time. And our application tonight, we worked really hard to comply with all of the criteria in your code for a conditional use, for a car wash use in this zoning district. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Bradley Miller to go into the details.
Thank you, Matt. For the record, my name is Bradley Miller with Urban Design Studio. The zip code is 33401 up in West Palm Beach. And I am the land planner on the project, and our firm also did the landscape architecture for the project. Just to walk you through this, I want you to know this is not a fly-by-night car wash operation. The Fazio family goes back to 1949 when two brothers started up in the northeast area, and then it's continued down here since 1978. Sonny's, Sonny's Enterprises is turned into a parts and, and a type of facility that supports the mechanics of car wash facilities. I've done quite a few in my career, and it seems like everybody uses Sonny's equipment in their, in their car washes. This is the family. It's Sonny Fazio, and his, his brother, Michael, carried on the business, and now it's Jeff Fazio, so they're fourth generation into the car washes. They know what they're doing, and it's, it's been a pleasure working with them through, through the time. This site is out on the western edge of Delray Beach. The green line there actually shows the line between Delray Beach and Palm Beach County. Then the site is located on the southwest corner of Military Trail and Conklin Drive, which is just a little bit north of Atlantic Avenue. We've got just shy of an acre, and as Matt explained, the property is zoned for general commercial. We have the required parking and open space. In fact, we exceed the open space requirement for the project, which we'll, we'll get into. This gives you a little bit of the history of the, of the property of, from when it was in the county in 1980. The county actually zoned the property for commercial use. And then in 2006, it came into the city. And when in the city, it, the city oftentimes does this with an annexation, is they apply to transitional land use and special activities district until it, some type of proposal comes along. In 2020, there was a proposal that did get approved for a self-storage facility on the property that was four stories. Didn't ever, obviously, didn't ever come to fruition. So since 1953, when this property was platted, to my knowledge, going back in area, so I've never seen any development on it. So the general commercial zoning district does allow the car wash, as Matt explained, and it requires this conditional use approval, which comes to you, and then it goes to the, the City Commission. And you can see on the graphic portion, there are some other, the AC is automotive commercial that's directly north of us. There's a Tire Kingdom there, and then there's a gas station to the, to the north of that. So our site plan, the, the table is going down, the predominant. So our site plan, the table is going down, the predominant property development regulations, and the check marks on the right-hand side are the critical column. We're meeting every one of the property development regulations that's required in there. If I listed them all, I think we started this in January with the formal application, and obviously, it took us a couple of months to get to that point. So we've been at it a long time. City staff has done a wonderful job of putting us through the drill of complying with this and providing the information to get it to this point, and making sure that we are meeting those regulations, which we are. So the scope of the site plan here is the access would come off of Conklin Drive. And just to touch on that, some of the questions that might come up in your mind is, well, why didn't you get a driveway off of Military? So this is a county, in the county jurisdiction of Military Trail, some parts of Military Trail is DOT. This is actually county. Either DOT or county would not allow for another driveway that close to Conklin, when you can have access off of Conklin. So any use on here, any commercial use on here, would require that access. The access would come in, it'd be a one-way flow, where you enter the property on that western driveway, and then you come in, there's three different queuing lanes, all of which meet the hundred-foot minimum distance, which I'll show you here in a moment. Then there's three points of service where you're actually paying for it. The northernmost, the one with the yellow arrow, is what we call the retail lane. That's where, if you don't have a membership, you go to that retail lane. They, in the number of facilities that they have, they're around 60% of their business are actually members. In the members, which are the green, there's two ways to go through, and the beauty of the membership is, you pull up, it's either identified by your license plate or sticker. Different places use different methods, and you go through. You've already paid for it, and you move on through. So it's a quick scenario. The retail takes a little longer because you're selecting which wash you want, but it's still a very short timeframe. You continue on in, and you go through the tunnel, and then, as you exit the tunnel, there's, you circle back around. You have the option to actually leave through the driveway, or you have 19 parking spaces there, all of which will have vacuums associated with it, that you can go and vacuum out your own car, all part of the service of what you just paid for. And then, when you leave, again, there's no way to get back to that other drive. You leave the driveway on the east side. Around the perimeter of the property, you can see we have very lush landscaping throughout. We do exceed, I mentioned that before, we do exceed the open space requirement, and we have 10-foot wide landscape buffers along the south and the west, which are adjacent to the residential. And along those property lines, we have an eight-foot wall. Six is usually the norm, but we've increased that to an eight-foot wall. Along Military Trail, we've included a wall as well there. We have, there's a special landscape buffer along Military Trail that's 30 feet, which we comply with, and then we have a wall that is six-foot high along Military Trail. And then lastly, along the north side, adjacent to Conklin, there's the 10-foot wide landscape buffer, the tree material and hedge material in there, and a four-foot masonry wall, again, to help with the screening and the buffering of the facility. Landscape, this is a little bit repetitive, but this emphasizes where the walls are, the red line or the eight-foot wall along the south and the west, six-foot along the eastern side up against Military, and then the four-foot wall on Conklin. Traffic and queuing was probably the most predominant thing that we talked about going through the staff review, understandably so. And there's a few things. There's traffic, and there's queuing. And this, through the traffic analysis that we're required to do, and Ms. Troutman is here if there's any technical questions through it, we provide a traffic study that then gets reviewed not only by the city, but it goes to the county for review. We, through that, we have 166 total trips, and then this is a copy of the letter from the county that confirms that we meet their traffic performance standards for the roadways and the traffic generated by the facility.
You have five minutes left.
Oh, okay. Go fast. I didn't know there was a time constraint. So to go faster queuing, I went through those. We've got the three lanes. All of them meet the, we have a minimum of 100 feet. We range from about 104 to about 119 with the queuing lanes, and the processing time is about a minute to get through there for the retail. Lighting has been brought up. We have light fixtures. The yellow circles there are actually the light fixtures that are fully screened from view, and if you really were able to zoom into the outskirts of the property on that exhibit, it's showing zero spillage going off of the site. The triangles are more building lights that are up close, and then it ties into the fixtures. Sound and noise was the other big topic, and we went through several different noise studies at the request of staff. The city's decibel level is 60, of staying below 60. And the darker blue component of the color of the exhibit that goes over our plan is showing where we're at that 60, and it goes out into the roadways, more so into Military than into Conklin. But what this does show is that any sound coming from the facility would be within those decibel levels at the property lines, which is what the code is that requires it. Architecturally, we have some neutral tones here of some topes and browns. We, again, worked with staff on this. We do have some living walls. The top right is what faces Conklin, and the top left is what would face Military Trail, the most prominent parts of the building, most visible. Carried that over into the top left is the point-of-service canopy. So the dumpster enclosure, we've got the sound walls, the vacuum equipment, all of it is architecturally consistent. And these show you some sites. This is looking at it, a view from the northwest, looking southeast. That's the entry into the tunnel. And this is the other end, as you come out, showing the vacuum canopies that are there. Scott wants to go back through the findings here, the technical criteria.
Well, I think we're running out of time, so I'll make it quick. I think that the staff report is part of the record here. What the staff report identifies is that we've met every single requirement in your code. So every published requirement in your code, we've met. We're not seeking any waivers or variances of any kind. With regard to the conditional use standards, the two real questions are whether there'll be a significantly detrimental effect on the stability of the neighborhood within which it will be located. And so what I, the reason why I noted at the beginning of my presentation that the site is zoned general commercial, is because under the code, as of right, no conditional use are liquor stores, drive-through restaurants, indoor shooting ranges, and other very heavy, intense type of uses that could just have to comply with other parts of the code. Our application exceeds code in many respects. As an example, it has larger landscaping and more lush landscaping than is required. It has taller walls than are required. It has larger setbacks and a much lower FAR than the code would require. And so considering the fact that the site is zoned general commercial already, and that there could be many more intense uses there, and the fact that we're exceeding code provides some competent evidence that we're not going to have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. And then the second criteria, really, is inapplicable, so I'll close on that and just reserve time for rebuttal, is whether there would be any hindrance to development or redevelopment. What's so unique about this site, and why we think neighbors are here and concerned, is it's a lone vacant site in a developed area. There is no redevelopment going on because there are, there's an existing autozone to the north, other commercial uses nearby, and then there's the single-family homes. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And at this point, Seth?
Oh, yeah. Before I start, can I just let the public know that the meeting is streamed on YouTube? It's going to be there forever, so I don't want your arms up to fall off if you're trying to record it. It's all out there, and it's live, and they're not going anywhere. Oh, you can record, yeah. It's all recorded on YouTube. It's streaming live right now. I just felt bad. You're going to be there for hours.
Ms. Howard and Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes, it would be me. Hi. Okay, good afternoon, board members. Again, Alexia Howells, Senior Planner. So tonight, we have, the purpose of the meeting is to present the Level Four Site Plan application and a conditional use for recommendation to city commission. So the subject property is a vacant site, and is just a little short of an acre, located at the southwest corner of Military Trail and Conklin Drive. I will briefly go through my presentation. I believe the applicant did a well through drop, so I will try to go as fast as possible. It is a GC zoning district with a land use of GC. The zoning district directly to the west is unincorporated Palm Beach County Agricultural Residential, and to the south and east is Low Density Residential, and to the north is Automotive Commercial. And the proposed use is a 4,207-square-foot automatic car wash with a FAR of 1/10 of an acre. So here we have a street view of the subject property at the corner of Conklin and Military. It's a vacant parcel, as you can see, with the Tire Kingdom across the street. So in 2006, the property was annexed into the city with a land use of TRN and a SAD zoning district for a proposed self-storage facility. And then in 2020, a privately initiated zoning, rezoning from SAD to GC, and a city-initiated land use amendment from TRN to GC for a O'Reilly Automotive Services was proposed, but the automotive O'Reilly never established at the time. And so it's vacant to this day. Okay, so here's an aerial image of the subject property outlined in red. The site lies along a major commercial corridor, which is South Military Trail to the east. Meanwhile, to the west is a single-family from Palm Beach County, and to the south is attached single-family, which introduces a sensitive boundary line along those two borders. And so across the street is the Tire Kingdom with a gas station, and across the street from Military is the High Point of Delray Neighborhood, as well as a Cube Smart Storage Facility. I'd just like to highlight that the site sits in between the major corridor and the existing single-family development, which makes the conditional use request under careful consideration of the potential impacts to the surrounding areas. I'd also like to highlight that the intent of the GC zoning district is for smaller parcels and for commercial and retail uses to activate the corridor. And so generally, transitional uses are less intense, so like an office or a retail is less intense than, let's say, anything with like a drive-through, let's say, or anything like that. That would be less intense, and so that's a more preferable transitional land use to be designated there. Here we have an aerial view. Again, we can see that the south and to the west are single-family residential, and then to the north are the commercial uses. And so the proposal is for a car wash. That includes a one-car tunnel, mechanical equipment, storage, restrooms, break room, and office. The site also includes 19 parking spaces at the front with canopy coverage, and the hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So this application contains two linked application requests, the Level Four Site Plan and a conditional use. Both applications must be reviewed together because the site plan provides the measurable design and operational details needed to assess the compatibility, traffic, noise, and buffering, which allows us to evaluate impacts, while the conditional use determines the use is appropriate at this location. So to understand why this requires a special review, I'll briefly explain what a conditional use is and the board responsibility is tonight. So a conditional use is not permitted by rights, and is generally acceptable in a zoning district, but requires a case-by-case review to ensure it is compatible with the surrounding properties and can operate without negative impacts. So the planning board shall make a recommendation of approval to the city commission. If the planning board does not make approval tonight, then the item stops tonight and dies. And the city commission has the authority to revoke the approval, and the operation of the use shall cease immediately. So basically, the establishment of a conditional use is based on the context of the neighborhood. To evaluate the conditional use, the board must make positive findings that the conditional use will not have significant detrimental effect upon the stability of the neighborhood, and that it will not hinder development or redevelopment of the nearby properties. In addition to the findings, both requests shall also be analyzed to its performance to Chapter Three standards, which includes concurrency, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the site plan standards. In terms of concurrency, the development meets all the requirements in regards to land use, water, sewer, solid waste drainage, and traffic. Next, we have to look at the policies and the comprehensive plan and show how this project further advances the vision and future growth of the city. So I've highlighted a few policies here. It really highlights how intensity, the use and intensity, and how it should be all appropriate and compatible to the adjacent land uses, and fulfill the remaining, and fulfill remaining land use needs according to the neighborhood, how it promotes job creation, how it has interconnections to adjacent properties, how it protects and enhances the residential neighborhoods, provides mix of uses, and has design characteristics that are similar in intensity and development patterns to the adjacent properties. And in addition, LDR Section 3.2.3 further articulates these policies into 12 standards, and we've condensed those into five categories. So basically, these performance standards incorporate good planning practices by inquiring analysis of intensity, neighborhood protection, traffic safety, connectivity, and design visibility. So when we take a look at intensity, not only do we look at FAR, but we also look at the characteristics of the proposed use, which includes intensity of development, sorry, traffic generation, noise, lighting, buffering, things like that. We also take a look at the, how can we protect the neighborhood? So we take a look at noise and lighting and odor, also as a traffic. We also take a look at connectivity. So the standards require that there's interlinks between adjacent properties, and there's accessibility ADA from public sidewalks. We also look at the design of the building, landscaping and lighting, and not tend to interfere with the traffic visibility and circulation. So here we have the site plan. The site plan illustrates how the site will function. The applicant did a well job kind of explaining how the overall operations of the car wash will operate, so we'll not go into detail with that. But overall, here you have the property line highlighted in red. We have a pedestrian path from Military Trail connecting to the site. We also have a dumpster enclosure provided at the northwest corner. We also have a buffering wall along the southwest and east property lines and on the north property line. We also have additional walls interior of the property at the end of the exit tunnel, and we also have a canopy shade covering the night parking spaces. So here, again, with the traffic circulation and generation, overall, the project met the traffic generation, and there were no concerns with that from the Palm Beach County. In terms of circulation... In terms of circulation, um, whether there's impacts to Conklin Drive with, um, circulation and overflow, uh, we required a stacking analysis from the applicant, and they have graciously provided that stacking analysis. Based on that analysis, that, uh, has determined that the, uh, all the queuing will be remaining onsite, and there's no overflow of stacking, um, onto Conklin Drive. We've also requested a noise study, um, to determine the impacts, uh, from the, the car wash. So here is a noise exposure map expert from the study, as well as Table B, which, uh, relates to the noise levels. So as mentioned, the code requires, um, a maximum of 60 decibels measured from the property line and not to exceed that. So overall, the study determined that the, um, car wash does not exceed the 60 decibels measured from the property line. However, staff would like to, uh, point to you, the threshold is being reached really closely, especially to the, um, interceptors, um, R5B and R9B. So R9B is, um, to the left top corner of the property, uh, closer to the single-family home, and that is measured at 54.7 decibels.
You're at the five-minute mark.
Oh, thank you. And, um, R5B, which is at the southern east corner, is measured at 59.4. So as you can see, it is close to the 60 decibels, but it is still meeting the minimum requirement. As to lighting levels, there's no, um, concerns with lighting levels. All the exterior lighting, um, does not exceed the .25-foot candles, and all the lighting is proposed to be full-cut-off luminaires. In regards to the landscape, um, the, the applicant really went through with the whole, uh, landscape application, so I will not go into detail, but there is a mitigation, um, that is provided, uh, with this proposal, which includes, uh, the removal of five slash pines and the replacement of, of that with five Simpson stoppers. I would like to highlight that there is a special landscape buffer that is required along the corridor of Military, and it's a 30-foot, um, special landscape, and they have provided that as well. And in terms of architectural elevations, um, the board shall consider if the, um, the proposed elevations are in good taste and good design and harmony with the overall city and the context of the neighborhood. And, um, here are some renderings at the below, as well as the elevations. And overall, here are some summary considerations for the board. The board shall consider if, uh, the use is appropriate in its context and adequate mitigation measures have been implemented, such as buffers, walls, um, and proper site design. Also, um, I'd like to mention that, um, if there's any concerns, the board would like to request additional information. Um, the, uh, one of the board actions is that you could continue a direction if you would like more information as to any concerns that you may have.
Okay, thank you. This time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Please come to the podium, which is actually a lectern.
Um, just one comment. Um, I know there was a lot of people who, uh, raised their hand when they said they were going to speak, um, but I know a few people came in late as well, so if you haven't been sworn in, but you plan on speaking, just let us know so that we can swear you in. Um, also, public comment will be limited to an hour.
I think Diane's supposed to...
Make note of the time when we start.
Yeah, just let her in. Okay. Yeah, make sure you're...
I thought it was over seven.
Okay, please. When you come to the podium, name, zip code, let me know if you've been sworn in, and you're limited to three minutes, as I said earlier, unless you're representing six other people who are here and won't speak, and if that's true, then just let us know.
Chair, can we do, um, swearing in whoever? No.
Are there people here that want to speak that have not been sworn in?
Anyone.
Okay, so we should be good.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. How you doing, everybody? Hope you had a great weekend. My Dolphins won. My name is, um, Harry Vogel. Um, uh, my zip code is, um, 33484. I moved here in 1972 from Miami Beach. I have lived on Conklin Drive at 5097 Conklin Drive for about 25 years. I'm speaking tonight to formally object to this application. The board has two responsibilities with a conditional use: protect the stability and quality of life of the surrounding neighborhood, and two, to ensure the use is compatible with adjacent residential properties. I feel this application fails both standards. The stormwater and well contamination risk. Many homes on Conklin, including mine, are on, rely on well water for our entire house. The engineering plans place exfiltration trenches at an elevation of 12 and 1/2 feet, and the water table is documented at 14 and 1/2 feet. This means the stormwater system is literally designed inside the water table. This guarantees that wash water, detergents, suffolents, oils, and dissolved pollutants will enter the groundwater and migrate toward a well. This is a public health hazard, and I just, I don't know if the staff reported ever evaluated it with our wells. I understand now that they are allowed to put the trench below, as long as it's lined with a fabric, and they do that, but unless if the fabric is kept up maintenance-wise, it's only going to last three to seven years, and then everything will leak into my, and not only that, the trench is sitting in, in the water, which makes it worse. And if the city approves this, knowing that trenches are below the water table and adjacent homes use wells, uh, the city assumes liability if contamination does occur. The applicant's own, uh, noise and lighting impacts. The applicant's own study shows noise and level at 59.4 decibels, way at the legal limit. By the way, in the folder there, the picture is my house, and the picture is the entry to the car wash, which is very, I mean, it's right there. The study excluded peak blower noise, vehicle noise such as horns, equipment, radios, and staff acknowledged that noise approached the established threshold. I'm not sure about this, though. The photometric plans also show light spillage of 1 and 1/2 candles at the residential boundary. The applicant says there is no spillover, but their photometric plan contradicts them. I had 20-foot LED poles and late-night vacuum lighting are not compatible with homes on Conklin. Third, traffic routed into a residential street. All traffic is pushed into Conklin Drive, a quiet residential street. Staff themselves wrote that the board must consider where this proposal will adversely impact the local neighborhood's street, and it will significantly. In conclusion, the public health risk to well water, the noise and lighting intrusion, the traffic incompatibility, and the contradictions between the applicant and staff, this use clearly fails both conditional use findings. And for these reasons, I respectfully ask the board to deny this application or table it until independent site-specific evaluation of stormwater, groundwater, lighting, and noise can be completed. Guys, my home is right there. I'm right at the entrance. There's 19 vacuums coming over the wa, it's a six-foot wall. I'm going, I'll stand at my front door and listen to vacuums all day long. And it's 7:00 in the morning on Sunday morning? I just ask that you just take another look at it, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the Planning and Zoning Board and all the...
Sorry, can you give me your name and, uh, zip code, please?
Excuse me?
Your name and zip code, please?
Yes, sorry. Uh, my name is David D'Amico. Uh, zip code is 33484. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
That's fine.
Um, I, uh, I'm a resident of Sierra Vista, and I just wanted to say good evening to the, uh, Planning and Board members, Planning, uh, Planning and Zoning Board members and all the attendees. I'm here tonight on behalf of the residents surrounding the proposed car wash, the project, uh, 2025-0118, uh, located on 14145 South Military Trail in Delray Beach. Rather than have, uh, multiple residents from, uh, my community make the same arguments, I'm speaking on behalf of all of the residents from the Sierra Vista Homeowners Association. I appreciate the, uh, the applicant's presentation, uh, but we believe it leaves out serious critical facts that, uh, directly affect our neighborhood's safety, livability, and property values. Across the country, municipalities have been cracking down on oversaturation of car washes, recognizing that the unlimited proliferation serves no public purpose and often harms, uh, surrounding residential communities. Tonight, we are asking Delray Beach to step in line with these modern planning practices and make a decision that protects residences, not just developers. This, uh, these comments have been put together, uh, by our, uh, association board members and also our, uh, attorney, who, uh, unfortunately, due to the, uh, short notice, was not able to attend this evening. So I just wanted to go, uh, go over a couple of points, uh, that the applicant had, has claimed. Uh, the first point being that the car wash is, uh, different and higher quality than nearby ones, which are just accessories to gas stations. With respect to this argument, uh, with, with respect, this argument ignores the core planning issue, which is market saturation and not product quality. Delray residents are, are not asking for premium versus basic soap cycles. We are pointing out that there are four car washes within two miles, two of them less than half a mile away. City after city has begun rejecting new car washes because they offer no essential community benefit, especially when existing capacity already exceeds demand. This is not the best use of one of the last developable, developable, uh, corners adjacent to a residential community.
He didn't say they were here.
Excuse us, I'm sorry. That's your, unless you're, unless there's six other people...
You have six people here?
We got, we got a little late right from three minutes, but you just hit the three-minute mark.
Okay.
Said what?
We'll, we'll...
Continue?
Yeah, we'll go for a little while.
Three minutes, okay.
Hold on, just one second. Are you representing an organization, sir?
Yeah.
It's your, you're representing the HOA?
Yes, Sierra Vista.
Okay, and he gets three additional minutes, he gets six minutes.
Yes, that's what I was going to say, we're going to get...
No, there's two different distinctions in our...
I think we should give him three additional minutes.
I'll try to go quickly through these bullets.
So just hit three more minutes, please, Mr. Patton.
Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt, please go ahead.
Uh, the applicants claim that the, uh, walls and landscaping will protect the neighbors and the property, butts no homes except one. Uh, this depiction of the site is incomplete, uh, though the parcel directly butts backyards and the neighborhood recreation area. A wall is not a substitute for a buffer. A masonry wall does not eliminate noise, visual intrusion, headlights, foot traffic, camera coverage of neighboring, uh, yards, or the feeling that a commercial operation is looming behind your home. Traffic congestion. The applicant, uh, uh, claims that the car wash adds only 166 daily trips, less than a fast food restaurant, and the county-approved traffic. Uh, this comparison is not a, uh, defense, it's a distraction. The fact that a different hypothetical intense use might generate more traffic does not mean that a bad use should be approved today. The stretch of South Military Trail already experiences daily congestion, U-turn hazards, and stacking at neighborhood entrances. Adding any project that increases northbound U-turns at Tyre Kingdom or pushes more vehicles into Conklin Drive creates predictable safety hazards. Increased neighborhood traffic, uh, the applicant claims that the zoning already allows intense uses, so traffic concerns are irrelevant. This statement misunderstands the role of a conditional use review. If the zoning code automatically permitted anything, we wouldn't be here tonight. The conditional use process exists specifically to allow the city to consider compatibility, neighborhood character, safety, cumulative impacts, and whether the use actually serves as a public need. Negative impact on property values. The property is already commercial. The applicant claims the property is already commercial, and that the walls and landscaping exceed code. The argument misses the point entirely. Property values are not impacted by zoning labels, they are impacted by real-world conditions. A high-intensity car wash with hundreds of daily vehicle movements, mechanical noise, vacuum bays, light poles, weekend peak activity unquestionably, uh, changes, unquestionably changes the residential character for the homes adjacent to it. In conclusion, we are not opposing development, we are opposing the wrong type of development. A car wash is outdated, oversaturated, nonessential use. Cities nationwide are now limiting, uh, limiting or outright rejecting new car wash, uh, applications because they consume valuable commercial land while providing minimal, uh, community benefit.
Sir, if you could just wrap up your last few sentences, please?
We urge the commission to deny this application and support development that uplifts, not undermines our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're back on three.
Hi, I'm Barbara McCabe, and I live at 33484 as well, and I am also a, uh, a resident of Sierra Vista. And I would like to point out that for over two centuries, our Supreme Court has designated that the most fundamental property right is the quiet enjoyment of one's property. And this proposed car wash takes that right from my neighbors and from me. I, um, it severely limits our ability to travel. As it currently stands, and as it will stand, because the Sierra Vista has been there for well over 20 years, the only way that we have to enter or exit our development is, um, by South Military Trail. So we are essentially a neighborhood of U-turners, and one of the places where we make that U-turn is at the intersection of Military and Conklin. And while this develop, the proposed development will, you know, come in and out of Conklin, the only place that they can go from there is Military Trail, which means that traffic at the few allowed nearby U-turn sites, uh, will be much thicker than it currently is. It's already pretty dangerous, and there are, everybody who's traveled on Military Trail knows, especially during the season, things can get pretty hairy around there. You know, the boys, which, you know, everybody loves the boys, but it makes for crazy traffic. And, um, people are coming and going and making some very exciting decisions at the last moment, um, in traffic, three lanes of which are going anywhere from, you know, 30 to 60 miles an hour. Because I know we all observe the speed limits, but, uh, we also know that there are those who don't. So, car wash... So car washes, in order to be successful, require a lot of traffic going in and out. That will ultimately come in and out onto Military Trail. And it will negatively affect my neighborhood and our ability to enjoy our daily lives. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mike Caruso. My zip code is 33484. My wife and I have been residents of Delray since 1989. We own three properties on Conklin Drive, one of which is a horse farm. I don't know if any of you know, my wife, Nangay, kicks off the St. Patrick's Day Parade every year with the three miniatures from the horse farm every St. Patrick's Day. Forty weekends a year, we have to make three to four trips up to Wellington with our show horses. Each trip has four horses in a trailer. That's the most that we can travel with at one time. When we get to the corner of Conklin and Military, we're sitting there for several minutes waiting for the traffic to subside long enough so that we can make it across Military Trail. And I don't know if anybody's ever trailed horses before, but when you've got four monstrosities in the back and you step on the accelerator too quickly, they go flying. They step on each other, they step on themselves, they hurt themselves, and there goes the whole training episode out the window, bringing them to the show grounds. In order to turn onto the northbound side of Military Trail, we need to wait for not only the southbound traffic, obviously, to subside, but the northbound traffic, which is exasperated by the traffic that comes out of the boys' market. The traffic cones that they put up right outside of the boys' market to prevent people from making a U-turn there forces everybody to come up to Conklin to make a U-turn there. Several years ago, a good friend of mine was killed on that corner, on his motorcycle, from a semi making a U-turn on that corner. We went to the county and asked them to put a traffic light there, which they replied that they wouldn't be able to because it's going to back up all the traffic coming from that southbound side of Military Trail. So the situation there certainly does not lend itself to having a business that's going to rely heavily on car after car after car. So we're here just to ask the board to turn this down and wait for something better to come along to put on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ethel Dodson. I'm a resident of High Point One West. And I want to apologize because I didn't come prepared with a very cute power presentation of my family and my children and my history of living here in the community. Because I had less than two weeks of notice to get prepared for this hearing. So I don't really... Gotta find glasses. Really have a whole lot more to say than these people have already put forth, but I do want to say that certain points jumped out on me during this power presentation that we've all been enjoying. And one of them is, the point is, that we are looking to avoid significant detriment to the community. And the other one is, does granting of this waiver align with goals that support superior pedestrian and residential environment and living conditions? And the other one was, oh, just 61 more cars going down Conklin Avenue? Well, I can't wait for that to happen. So anyway, those are my points, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Vandemini, 33484. I'm part of Sierra Vista. I'm a fairly new resident, but what attracted us to this community is the quiet charm. We have a lake in the back of our community with a lot of birds, wildlife. I'm a birder, so I'm aware of all the birds that are there. And I'm very concerned about the environmental impact a car wash will have on our water. There's chemical runoffs that could contaminate our lake through the stormwater drainage. And that will impact the health of our lake and the wildlife that's sustained by it. We have river otters, turtles, raptors, American kestrel, great blue heron. I saw red shoulder hawk today and an osprey. They are... I have pictures, videos, it's beautiful. We have painted buntings, loggerhead strikes. We have really everything. And this little land really serves as an environmental buffer for the noise from Military, the pollution, and also the wildlife that's sustained by it and nest there. So tonight, I'd like to deny this application. My former neighbors already addressed the traffic, which is also a concern. The noise, birds are affected also by light and by noise, so that's also not good. And I don't know how many more minutes I have. Yeah, I would just like to protect our community's natural water resources and the potential harm to our lake ecosystem represents an unacceptable environmental risk, in my opinion. And also, all of our drains go to the ocean. We're a coastal town, we're a village by the sea, and I feel like we're losing all of our natural areas to development. And I know this is what it's sold for, but it's, there's a reason this is conditional. It's because it can have environmental impact. I, I don't know, I heard that O'Reilly couldn't open because their drainage was going to go through our lake, and we opposed it. I don't know if that's true, but I don't know how things have changed now, and now the drainage is not an issue anymore. So I don't know if you can respond to that, but this is my concern today. So yes, I'm asking the board tonight to deny the application to require preservation to our neighborhood, something that would fit in the neighborhood, something that would be good for the neighborhood. We don't need another car wash, there's many already. And yeah, explore alternative use for this property that's more compatible to the character of the neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Berkland, and 33484 is my zip code, and I was sworn in. The, my, my, I live in High Point, which is adjacent to our communities to the north. And I happen to have to go out every day. I have to go out lakefront and stare down two lanes of traffic coming at me from, one from the boys and one from the post office. Then, once they try to figure out where they're going, you know, I'm going. And now, what happens when you go... Let's say I'm going to the post office. I go to the post office, I come out, I decide I'm going to go up north a little safer and do a U-turn at Conklin. Well, Conklin is crazy with the traffic that's coming down Military from Lake Idah particularly at that, you know, during the daytime. Someone said from 30 to 60 miles an hour. It's very, it's very realistic. And there's people that are... The people that are doing 60 are causing problems for everybody. The people that are doing 30 are causing problems for everybody, and we all don't get along. Now, the reality is, lakefront and the boys is probably, I'm pretty sure I was told this, is one of the highest accident locations in this part of town. All, you can go out there, you can see all kinds of fragments from the cars and everything else that's there. Up the road, I used to be at Villa Del Ray and Military. And they have a gas station and a car wash. And they have a traffic light, right turn on red. But it didn't slow down the traffic and it didn't slow down the accidents, lots of accidents. And so now, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing more cars. If you're going northbound on Military, the only way you can get to this car wash is to make a U-turn on Conklin, or make a left turn on Conklin. And now you gotta navigate all the traffic coming at you before you can even get to Conklin. Speed up to get there. What happens if somebody's coming out Tire Choice, Tire Kingdom or whatever? It's just a formula for a lot of risk. And it's one of those things that drives our wonderful car insurance high. Because fortunately, you know, we don't have more deaths, but we have a lot of car accidents. And there's thousands and thousands of dollars of repair. And that's getting passed along to all of us in our car insurance. And not to have a traffic light, not to have, you know, to throw more cars into a dangerous spot going from across three lanes northbound, three lanes southbound, is a risk. So that's all I'd like to say on the subject, but I don't, I don't think it's... The traffic study, I don't know, you know, whether that's available to us, that we can see that, because I just find it hard to believe there's only 100... What, 168? Is that what, is that what they said? Boy, I think I count that by nine o'clock. All right.
Thank you.
Were you sworn in, sir?
I am, thank you. Excuse me, I give these to you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeff Overstreet, Conklin Drive, Delray Beach, 33484. Mike, I did not realize the motorcyclist who was killed was a friend of yours. I'm very sorry to hear that. This is absolutely the wrong place for a car wash. The primary issues are health, safety, and especially traffic, as you've heard repeatedly. There are other issues as well. The plan fails to meet several requirements of city planning documents. Employment, an automatic car wash essentially runs themselves. With one, two, or even four people at certain times, that does nothing toward the goal of enhancing employment. Odors and air pollution. Apparently not mentioned in the documents, the car wash itself is associated with chemicals and vapors. Vehicles idling, they said three lanes of queuing. Vehicles idling essentially along the property line of the residences. And the prevailing winds are from the east toward those residences. The dumpster area is at the southwest corner, closest to all of the residences. Is planned to be emptied during the business... I'm sorry, during overnight hours. Sanitation trucks are inherently loud, as is the banging of emptying of the dumpster. We're looking at 85 to 100 decibels. No one should need to put up with that. Also, with the 17 and a half-foot tall light poles, the brightest lighting is overflowing onto the home right next to the west end of the property. Sleep is a critical issue, not only for property enjoyment, but also health and safety as well. The refuse area and refuse handling are poorly thought out without consideration for the impact on the neighbors. The 19 high-powered vacuums, that is a lot. Traffic by far is the most significant impact, exacerbating an already challenging intersection, creating an avoidable hazardous life-threatening situation. The stated capacity of the car wash tunnel is one vehicle per minute. That's 60 vehicles an hour, 120 trips. Developer traffic projections are for up to 24 vehicles entering in a 15-minute interval. That's 48 trips within a very short period of time onto a small residential street and through an already burdened intersection. The intersection at Conklin Drive, as well as at Lakefront, which is immediately to the south, are already in need of revision to address traffic flow and safety issues. An extraordinary number of U-turns, both from the north and from the south, make this a very challenging intersection. One that the communities of Conklin Drive, 52nd Avenue South and Sierra Vista must navigate regularly. There is no other option. It fails to meet a number of requirements. I put them on page two of that handout. It does not meet the goal to enhance residential areas. Instead, it is quite detrimental. Noise, air pollution, odors, lighting, well-water concerns, and worsening traffic issues. Given the problems and hazards that this will create, an automated car wash does not belong at this location and would be a bad idea. While I wish the developer well, this is not the place and the project should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am the closest neighbor to the new project, so I will be highly impacted, unfortunately. It gets approved, I'm just behind the driveway. It's 5098 Conklin Drive. I represent the owner, and I'm living there and since almost five years. So I just want to concur to all the speakers beforehand. I don't want to waste your time because it's life-altering for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lauren Richards, 33484. I live in Sierra Vista. My home is one that would face the walls of the car wash directly from my front driveway. Right now, I can actually hear the noise from the Tire Kingdom. And that's a lot further away than this car wash will be. And I know that there's legal decimals or whatever that this fits, but I know that this is going to damage our neighborhood and my value of life in my home with the noise from this car wash, from all of those vacuum stations. Obviously, everyone's brought up the traffic. It's a huge concern. Not too long ago, we had an accident right in front of the post office that was also a fatal accident. And it just keeps getting worse. There's just too much, I think, from the chemicals, from the pollution, from the noise that just would make this pretty detrimental to our neighborhood. And I strongly ask for your consideration for something less intrusive for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Holtzman. Zip code is 33484. I live in Sierra Vista. And it's, this project would be right in my front yard, really. I would, I mean, everything would be... I'd be faced with all of it, with the noise, with the smells, the traffic. I mean, it would just be, it'd be horrible. It would, like, people are saying it really would affect our, our daily lives. And to have this most of the day, that we're going to be faced with this, it would be, it would really affect us very detrimentally. So I would appreciate if you would consider everything everybody said and hopefully deny this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Alcagno. I live at 33484, zip code. And I'm about four or five houses in on Conklin Drive there. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. It's my first time speaking at an event like this, so if I stumble or have trouble getting a few things, you know, give me a little bit of a break. But I've lived here a shorter amount of time than most of my neighbors, about five, six years. Getting married soon, we're going to try and have some kids. And we've already got a Tire Kingdom out at the front of the street. I don't want to see a car wash going in right across from it as well. The things that I'm concerned about with this is the traffic. Like, I'm going to echo and repeat from what a lot of people have already brought up. But just tonight, to leave Conklin to head north onto Military, dead over to Lake Idah, there was five cars that were waiting to make a U-turn. And I had to wait for all of them to make a U-turn to make sure nobody was turning down Conklin for me to get out, to go ahead and head over to this meeting. A lot of you guys, ladies and gentlemen, said that you came by the site or you've looked at it online or even just driven by. But I'm sure that you had a little encounter with just how many vehicles passed by on Military, how many already go up and down Conklin, and what it was like trying to leave there if you were heading north or south. It could get a little bit tricky, and it gets even worse at night or early in the morning, as you could imagine. A few things that did stick out to me as well as with the traffic study is there's one lane that's leaving the car wash complex. There's one that goes in and then it disperses into a three-lane payment system, but there's one that's leaving. When that, when the people leave that area, they're going to make an immediate right. And it looked like a very small amount of area before you get over to Military Drive. So Military have there. So Military Ave there. So that's going to create a backup, not only on Conklin, but for people that are going to be exiting through the car wash, and that's just a more of a delay for people that are leaving either the residential area or the horse farm area to just get out and get on with their lives. As well as when you're entering Conklin from Military, if that line were to ever back up onto Conklin, and it might not be for a long time, just a few seconds delay, but a few seconds, turn in a few minutes, depending on how many cars are making that turn into the car wash complex, you know, that delays you getting home, or that delays the garbage truck from going down the street, or an ambulance, or a fire truck, or whatever other business or, or family matters that have to be attended to. It's just a small delay, but over time, it becomes a nuisance and adds up, could be a safety issue. Like my neighbor brought up, that's going to be almost directly across from the car wash complex.
Just please wrap up your final comments, please.
Yes. The, the well system is a big concern. We're on wells, a lot of chemicals are involved. If this does get passed, maybe there could be some type of testing quarterly or annually that happens. So I'm, I'm against this proposal, and I wish them well in their business endeavors, just not at the front of the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Frank Galanti, High Point, 33484, a five, I think, maybe, but I just have a couple of comments. One, I don't think a six-foot wall around a 20-foot tall building will stop the noise from emanating out into the community. That's one. So if you don't build a 25-foot wall around the entire perimeter of the car wash, you're going to hear the noise no matter what. That's number one. That's number two, that's number one. So, number two, I understand you guys have, are in a difficult position. They laid out a very beautiful plan, beautification of a lot that's going to have a detrimental effect on the peace and tranquility of the people that live on Conklin and the surrounding community. Not only the traffic, the traffic's probably the worst, because I have to make U-turns every time I go do something on Military. And it's tough enough, and I'm pretty good, and look at the people in the audience. First of all, as far as the community is concerned and everything surrounding it, I don't think anybody's running out to go and do their own vacuuming after a car wash. I mean, you laugh, but it's serious. Nobody's going to be running out to do this. This is not an environment for that type of thing, especially with four other car washes, like, within a mile. There's one right on jog that's full service, and it's almost empty all the time I drive by it. Just because you can do something doesn't make it right. Now, just because the land's available for commercial use, I'm sure nobody would be here tonight if it was just a residential, I mean, a commercial project. Like, if it was just for retail or some kind of service for people, medical buildings, there would be nobody here tonight. But a monstrosity like that, that doesn't belong in between this residential area. Now, I heard rumors, I've been in Delray for like five years now, that the outlet mall on Atlantic was supposed to be a car wash. Now, maybe you, all of you know something about that, but I heard that there was supposed to be a car wash on Atlantic, like, just west, like, in the outlet mall where all those little businesses were. And I think that failed for some particular reason. I don't know if it's the same company that wanted to buy it. I heard because of financial situation, it didn't go through. I don't know if the same company is behind it. But this just doesn't belong here, and it's nothing against everybody. They did a terrific job, the attorney did a terrific job, the planner did a terrific job. Just doesn't belong in this community, especially in that location. That's all I got to say.
Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm so pleased that you're...
You can get your name and zip code.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Marcy Wise. I'm at 33484. I'm a resident of Sierra Vista. And I wanted to say, I'm actually the president of the HOA there. Last week, we had an HOA meeting, and we had the most attendance that we've ever had of people coming to air their opposition to this car wash. And so I'm glad that we have such good representation, because we were really only notified November the 4th about this hearing. So we did not have a lot of time to prepare. We have an attorney, but she, she could not be here tonight because it was such short notice. So we pulled together as best we could and got the residents of Conklin and even High Point and asked them to come and air their opposition to this car wash. I've lived at Sierra Vista since 2004. I'm a proud resident of Delray Beach, I love it. Excuse me, but I also see that it's getting more and more congested here. There's more and more traffic, and when I leave for work each morning out of Sierra Vista, I have to turn right to go, to go ahead and make a U-turn, because I go to West Palm Beach. And I'll tell you, it's getting more and more difficult. I have to wait for all of that traffic going south, you know, to be safe. And so I'm very concerned about a car wash being there. I heard somebody say, and I was going to mention it, that Tire Kingdom, I can hear, and I'm on the, the south side of La Sedona, so I'm farther away, but I can hear Tire Kingdom, their machinery, when they, I guess, take on or put off the tires, and it's already very disturbing. The whole area, except for Tire Kingdom, is a residential area, and we've enjoyed it that way. It's been peaceful and quiet, except for Tire Kingdom, maybe, and we'd like to keep it that way. We appreciate new business in the area. Delray needs to grow, and it has grown, but this is an inappropriate use of that property, and it would really be a detriment to all of us in the area. Thank you so much for your consideration today. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, Nonge Caruso, 33484. I don't really, haven't heard enough about how really bad that intersection is. If, if I'm daring enough to get out into the intersection in the middle, now I cannot see, because the people that are making the U-turns to go north are blocking the view, and the same thing going the opposite direction. It is just, every time you drive through there, especially heading north, you are really, it is quite difficult to navigate. Sometimes I even go south and just take the turnpike instead of going north. That's how long it takes to get out of there. And I can't imagine the people that live at Sierra Vista having to make U-turns all the time to go home. It's, and I love a car wash, but it's just a very bad, bad area, dangerous area. I know, my daughter was just hit in a, in a car accident there, and somebody else who works at the horse farm was just hit. Just very difficult. It looks like, I guess, when you're driving home and you don't have to navigate that corner, it looks just like another intersection, but it's not. It is a very scary intersection, and most people really don't care, because they don't live there. And then the people that'll leave Tire Kingdom, they really don't care. They just pull out, they don't even look. Now you're dealing with who's turning onto Conklin, heading south, and now you're facing the person that's coming out. It's quite a cluster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, public comments closed. Does the applicant or the staff have any rebuttal or cross-examination? Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Matthew Scott. For the record, we don't have any cross-examination, but we do have some rebuttal.
Please.
Great. First of all, thanks to everyone for coming. Really appreciate it. We appreciate your feedback, and we absolutely understand that this presents a change for your community, and that there are lots of concerns. We're respectful of that. And so that's part of why we spent so much time with the city's staff, trying to modify the plans in a way to exceed code in all respects and do as much as possible with this use to get ahead of potential impacts. And so I just want to talk a little bit about that. The way that conditional use applications work under the law is that it's a test. It's a test for an applicant to see if they can comply with the requirements established by a city's code. It is true, so one of the members of the public stated that some cities are zoning them out or creating specific restrictions for car washes. That is true. The city of Delray Beach can do that. They could come up with restrictions that would make it impossible to have a car wash in this location. However, the city chose not to do that. Rather, the city chose to zone this site general commercial, and as the staff report states, a car wash is an anticipated use at this site. And so that's a choice, that is a legislative decision, and the city could have chosen otherwise. And so it's important, I think, and again, respectfully to the neighbors, that there's an understanding that zoning is also an invitation to the members of the community and the citizens of what can and cannot go in places. And so if I could pull up my presentation real quick, I just want to show something very quickly.
I just want to comment that you do have three minutes for rebuttal, but if...
Great.
Up to the board's discretion if they want to give you more.
Okay. I think I went the wrong way. And so before my client made the decision to put this property under contract and invest the substantial dollars in this application process, it's taken over a year, they researched the site, and they first established that it is zoned for a car wash if we can pass the city's test. Something else my client did extensively was research the area. And as you can see from this screen, something that we sort of take issue with staff's report that as you proceed west on Conklin, it's a big residential divider, that's not in fact true. Our research suggests that there is a horse farm. I believe someone from the horse farm spoke and said how difficult it is to get out for their horse commercial activities. Similarly, there is not one, but I believe two, orchid commercial stores. There is Tire Kingdom directly adjacent to it, and then a gas station, and public storage, post office, commercial uses throughout. And so there are existing conditions here that make it a very unique site, a very odd general commercial site. But the fact that it was zoned in this way, without additional restrictions that the city can place, that they chose not to, is something that we really encourage the board to keep in mind. I also want to directly address someone's concern about the wells. That's a fair concern. It is a requirement of an application like this, that we have storage tanks on site, and that we treat all water before it can go in any way into any sort of sewer. And that's something that the city's engineer reviewed at length and said meets or exceeds code. And so I get the concern, it's a fair one, but it's something that we went out of our way to address during the review process. I don't know if I have a lot of time, is there something else you want to do? This is my client. Can you introduce yourself?
Is it okay if they continue? Yeah, we'll just give the city the same on that.
My name is Jeff Fazio. I am the proposed developer-owner-operator. I'm a fourth-generation car washer. My family started in the car wash business in 1949. In my professional career spanning over the 23 years, I participated in the development of over 270 car wash projects throughout the country. There is no seepage of water in a leach field that could affect any wells or water table in this project. We have a design trench that goes to sanitary sewer per your building codes. So I just, from a factual perspective, I just want to offer that information. Car washes, and again, my family owned and operated a manufacturing supply company, we, we wouldn't, couldn't be a pollutant and have this type of a business. That's just from a factual car wash industry perspective, I just wanted to lay that on the table. I, too, hear all the neighbors. I have participated in many projects that are in and around neighborhoods. When done responsibly, I promise we will be a positive contributing member. So thank you for your time. I'm here, I'm here to take questions, here to talk to folks. I've reached out, I've sent a letter in accordance to your two-week zoning announcement, so I'm not shying away from any of this. I'm right here to participate at any level you need me to.
Thank you.
Staff?
We'd like to make clarification of the principle of current planning, because the applicant's attorney, like, just kind of repeatedly mentioned that the city anticipate this type of use in the site. The clarification, this is a conditional use approval? A conditional use appro, a conditional use is not permitted by right. It adds, it is at the board's discretion, after examining the analysis that staff provides to the LDR, and after the applicant justification of why this is appropriate, based on the applicant points of view, and also after hearing the community, because an integral part of a conditional use is the notices that are sent, and per the LDR, it is required to be sent 10 days in advance, and then this is, this was sent November 4th. So staff followed the procedural requirement of the conditional use, so the neighborhood to voice their opinion, this is part of the examination of the conditional use. Staff highlighted a list of consideration to the board to consider through the staff report and analysis, and we have a brief slide of it, and it is left for your discussion, and thank you.
Great, thank you. Time for board comments. Mr. Katz, Mr. Char, where do you like to start?
Can I pass?
You can.
I'll, I'll do my best. Could someone explain a little bit more about how the wastewater is going to be processed, and the, the volume of that, that wastewater? And the concern that whatever container or trench it's in is not sufficient to keep it from leaching into their well water or their lake?
Okay, so the car wash bay is a concrete poured floor, as is the trench. You have piping going into the trench. All the water and sediment leaves the trench, goes into underground reclaimed tanks, which are also concrete precast, which then overflow to an oil-water separator. Those tanks get serviced regularly through a pump and tank company, but we tie directly into your sewer, sanitary sewer. Storm sewer is exfiltration, that's its own connection to your storm sewer.
So that has nothing to do with the actual cleaning and washing process? The storm, the storm sewer is, is runoff from the hard surface? Is that what you're saying?
That's your asphalted area outside the wash bay. Has nothing to do with the wash bay. The wash bay is a self-contained building and trench, separate from sanitary, or separate from storm sewer. Correct.
Could we talk about the, the noise a little bit? And I'm not sure who to address this to, but you're probably...
I'm the guy. As a subject matter expert in our industry, I'm the guy.
The, the decibel level to the south didn't seem to be indicated on the drawing, like, where the tennis course is.
If you want to pull that up, that exhibit is going to show you that the sound doesn't spill over there. That's not how sound goes. It comes out the way the entrance end or exit end. Remember, that wash bay is self-enclosed, so it can't go through block walls directly to the south or to the north. That's just not how sound travels.
But, but you are going to have noise both from the tunnel and also for the drying area, right?
And that's what that depicts. Those waves are sound waves, and the further you get away from the property line, the less they are to the table up to the top end corner is going to give you the decibel ratings per the manufacturer's, you know, specifications, so...
And, and that's both for the equipment in the tunnel and the equipment on the outside? Or you're only talking about the outside?
Yes, both. They take into consideration everything.
Okay.
Correct. That's all public record, part of the submittal process that we, you know, gave staff. They reviewed that. 31 pages of the sound study, so it's all the equipment.
Can we talk about the photometrics a little bit?
Sure. I'm not as strong there, but...
So my, my question, and I assume on this one, the red circles are the lights.
Correct.
Right? Why do those have to be on the periphery of the property?
Police are going to tell you what they want, is they want to light this site up to make sure that there are not people encamped on your property. So they're going to want to make sure your site triangles are illuminated for clear traffic as part of staff's, you know, procedures as they go through the lighting plan.
So I think the police call that SEPTED as their, their review. Did they do a review of this plan?
My understanding.
Yes, SEPTED is part of the technical advisory committee, and they reviewed the plan. plan.
And does that include the height of the poles? Those poles seem to be 17 and a half feet, I think?
That's correct. The height of the poles are within the LDR requirement. So staff, the photometric is meeting the requirement. Correct.
All right. And do those lights stay on all night?
Yes. That's what police are going to tell you that they want you to do. They don't want a site that goes dim at a certain point. You're going to create, you know, a bees-a-honey situation where you're going to have people camped out there.
In a somewhat similar situation with automobile dealerships, rather than lights after a certain hour, they use noise detectors so that you don't have to have the lights after whatever hour. And as far as I know, the police supported that.
And so if that were a condition, that would be something that we would consider as well. The lighting was, I mean, as you can see from the photometric plan, we don't exceed code anywhere on property lines, but if that were a condition, that's something we would work, happy to be work with staff on.
And just a little bit on traffic. I think the number per day, probably not counting Saturday and Sunday, is 166, I heard? The amount of the traffic?
That's right.
I'm having the traffic engineer come up.
Can you state your name, please?
Good evening. My name's Andrea Troutman with Pender Troutman Consulting, and the zip code is 33458. And yes, it's a county-established trip generation rate, and it's 166 daily trips for a one-tunnel car wash.
So can you tell me how much traffic is on Conklin today and what increase, a percent increase that would be?
We did not, as part of our study, count Conklin Drive. The county did not require it because our study was considered insignificant. So I do not have that number, but our traffic is considered insignificant from a county standpoint with 12 a.m. peak hour trips and 14 p.m. peak hour trips. So I do not have that answer for you. And I was looking on the county's website while the meeting was going on to see if they had any count data, and they did not have any count data for Conklin Drive.
You can see my thought here, which is if it's a 1% increase, that's one thing. If it's a 50% increase, that's a totally different thing.
Given the number of houses and the horse farm that was discussed and the Tire Kingdom, I would think it's greater than a 1% impact, but I do not believe it would be a 50% impact on this. But I do not have any information on the traffic on Conklin.
And my last question on traffic is stacking. Is that part of the Troutman study also?
Yes, the city requested us to do a detailed queuing analysis, and we looked at the processing times for both the retail and the member lanes. And we looked at a peak hour, what they call peak of the generator, which we looked at a Saturday peak of the generator. And we assumed for a conservative perspective that even though it was an hourly volume, that it all, we assumed, let's say they all come in in 15 minutes in the worst-case scenario, there still was not any queue more than what is being provided.
So on, could we see the site plan for just a second? And then I'll stop. So I'm not a traffic engineer. There are, I believe, two, at least two possible queuing areas, maybe three. One, of course, is coming into the three pay stations. And I think you've answered that one. You don't see any possibility of that queue extending out onto Conklin?
Correct. We established the queue for both the retail and the member lanes, and they have more than the 100-foot queue that is required of the city. And we determined that the queue is not going to exceed what they are providing.
Okay. And then I can see a queuing possibility at the end of the tunnel as the cars are making their decision either how to get back onto the street or whether they're going to go into one of those little bays. Is that?
That was not
Because you've got three lanes going to one.
That was not something that we addressed. We were addressing, would we have an impact on Conklin? If there is a queuing issue there, that's going to be internal to the site and not have an impact on the adjacent roadway network.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Katz, we can get your chance now.
Yeah, we can. Mr. Bat?
Thank you for your presentations and thank you for your comments. I had a couple of questions of the applicant. When the sound testings were done, did they have all 19 bays operating, the vacuums operating at the same time?
Correct. That's per the report. So they take our site plan in, they have all the manufacturers spec, they've gone to sites that are operating the equipment, they put the microphone right up to it, enter the data into the sound plan software, and then take in the site plan as we have it laid out, and then the software generates the sound waves and gives the readings. The sound company also came and actually took readings on military in all those locations. That's also part of the report.
Yeah, I can figure that one out. It just, it would seem to me it would make sense that if all 19 are going, it would make more noise than if just one were going.
So it's a central vacuum, very different than individual vacuums. Central vacuum is enclosed in an eight-by-eight, what looks like a dumpster enclosure. And so then you just got a trunk line and you got drops.
So you've got one going, you've got 19 going, it's all enclosed in there? The, I don't think any of us are hydrologists or sound engineers or traffic engineers, but the, hold on just a second. Through the wonderful world of AI.
Cars idling.
Excuse me?
What about cars idling?
You can just limit comments from the public, please, and just focus on
Public comments closed.
This is, this I think will be the sound of 60 decibels. Which if that were going off right next to my backyard, I don't, I think it would bother me. And the other thing that bothers me is that I went by the, what's it called? The rub-a-dub, which is a car wash, may not be technically as advanced as you say yours is. What got me was the cadence of the noise. It wasn't just like, you know, it's like leaf blowers. I can sort of see a constant leaf blower noise, but when they're going on and off and on and off and on and off, that drives me nuts. And I'm just, I'm concerned about that cadence because it was loud and if I lived behind the rub-a-dub, which isn't a comparable situation, but I would, I would lose my quality of life really.
So I'm with you, and rub-a-dub is a location that I've equipped. I mean, and/or the tires plus took no consideration to the neighbors by building walls or buffering or sound mitigation strategies. That would not be in today's best practices. You know, 20, 30 years ago, maybe.
Right.
But today's day and age, you have to be responsible to the level at which staff is going to require the 60 decibels. And so we in our industry, we know this. We've done these projects. We understand how to mitigate sound, and so we incorporate these strategies. You know, I can't fudge like a certified report. I have to show them what I've got and what I'm procuring. They enter in the data, they give it back to me. We worked on this way ahead of time to make sure this was going to be in compliance.
And a question for the city. Did anybody in the city ever think to rezone their parcel of land? It just seems like if somebody came in and tried to zone it commercial, you'd say it's spot zoning, you can't do it.
Sorry, Alexis Rosenberg, senior planner. I also helped work on the project. When we were looking at the history, it looked like it was rezoned to general commercial. I believe it was back in 2020 because the O'Reilly Auto Parts wanted to come in. So it was previously zoned SAD because a special use wanted to come in. So since then, it has not been looked at for a city-initiated rezoning, nor has an applicant come in to rezone it. So the answer, we haven't, that hasn't been looked at yet.
Then, just like I said, I'm concerned about the cadence noises. I wish the phases were in a different line of words, but that's not for me to say now. Another concern is the hours of seven to nines, seven days a week. That doesn't give anybody a break from traffic. It doesn't give anybody a break from noise. And then the other concern was the refuse pickups at night. I mean, I don't know that, I mean, you can sign up for at night, I suspect, but who knows what time Waste Management comes to pick up their stuff, and that is a pretty loud bang.
Anytime you want. I mean, you could do after hours. I mean, we prefer it not to be during operating hours, but you know, we could do it at 7:00 in the morning. I mean, we had, we worked with Waste Management as part of the process. They gave us a letter and said, what do you want us to say? You want to do after hours? You want to do during hours? You tell us what you want.
And then I'm concerned about if they do do it after hours. And my other final point, I think, I don't think that the, I was going to offer kind of a split-the-baby compromise to get the applicant and the residents together to see if they could ameliorate any of the concerns. But I think there's opposition to simply just having a car wash there. So I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Strong?
No, we're going to leave here for the last. Next to last.
Well, you can bet cleanup. Saves me the less questions I can that you guys ask.
Okay, this is a tough one. We had a situation similar to this a couple of months ago when we were talking about the residential development over on Federal Highway.
We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. On Federal Highway. And, you know, I had to go back to the charge that we were given at the beginning of the meeting, where our goal or our charge is to base our decisions not on our personal feelings, but based on whether or not it meets the required, you know, the odds of the regulations or the applicable rule of policy. And when I look at it in that sense, you know, it appears that the applicant had gone above and beyond in certain areas, they came kind of close with the noise, especially when we're talking about, I think it was 5B, as well as Area 9, 9B. And, you know, I applaud them for that because you didn't have to go up above, just meet the minimum requirements. So here's where I grapple with this, because I hear the concerns of the community. And initially, my thought process was, okay, I hear you are, I've read through all of the documents that you sent, but we still have our charge, right? And, you know, as somebody in the legal field, I'm steadfast with the rules, with the law. And you got to stay within the confines. But I appreciate staff because you said something very relevant in your, I don't know if it was your rebuttal, but you indicated, look, this is conditional use. I'm looking at, and from what I'm hearing from staff, conditional use is, I guess, the exception to the rule. And if I, in my quoting, if I'm quoting you correctly, if the applicant meets the, we look at whether or not the applicant meets the requirements, but however, there's still subject to the discretion of the board. And that discretion then takes us outside of whether or not these requirements met. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes, sure, that's correct.
That's categorically incorrect. That's categorically not what the law says.
Just a second, he wasn't asking.
Can you give me?
Go ahead.
Conditional use is at the board discretion. So there are findings. So if the board find the two findings, the two main findings are met, that means that you can approve it. Also, the board can impose additional conditions that you may see if you are leaning, for example, let's say, for example, you're leaning towards approval of this. So that means you may wish to consider additional conditions regarding hours of operation, monitoring of the equipment, additional buffering, things about the noise or the lighting. So that's also within the purview of the board to impose if you are going to proceed with some sort of conditional approval. But again, it's not permitted by right, and the community also are part of this process. This is part of the quasi-judicial hearing for a conditional use.
Can I just add to what he said? The two main findings that he referenced is, are you able to make a finding that what is presented won't be significantly detrimental to the stability of the neighborhood and won't hinder redevelopment in addition to all the other, all LDRs that they presented today?
Right. Okay. So those are our requirements?
Correct.
Regardless of what our personal feelings are about it?
Correct, always.
Okay, that's, all right. Because I wasn't sure if the conditional use took us outside of that, so I wanted to make sure.
I mean, so I would say like the conditional use requirements, it's like a multi-factor approach, right? Because you are considering, your main consider, I mean, yes, your main consideration is, you know, what is being presented today won't significantly impact the detriment, to the detrimental state of the stability of the neighborhood. So you have to take in multiple factors into consideration, and that's why he's saying you can place, you know, additional conditions, and it's not permitted right.
I got you, okay.
Can I just comment on that, since we're talking about the laws?
If you would want.
Please, go ahead.
Well, I just think it's really important, right? Because we made this application, we paid the fees, we went through this process, and so we'd hope that we come here tonight and the correct law be applied to our application. That's why I started the hearing off with reading from a reported case where an applicant for a conditional use sued a county or a city because they were not given the proper procedure. And so I'll just read it again.
I'm sorry, before you read it, just can you give me that site?
Yes, absolutely. It is 315 Southern Second, 478. It's from the Fourth DCA.
Okay, thanks.
And so, sorry, I don't know this gentleman's name, but he has his commentary on what the review process is. What the law says is, applications like this for a conditional or special exception type use are a permitted use to which the applicant is entitled, entitled, unless the zoning authority determines, according to the standards of the zoning code, that such use would adversely affect the public welfare. This exact same case goes on to talk about community participation, because it is important. We want to hear from the neighbors. But this case says, it's not to poll them, it's not to take a poll on whether it's popular, right? We don't do, you know, legislation and governance by applause meter. It's rather for them to present competent and substantial evidence that we don't meet a code requirement. And so this use can be unpopular. You can all hate it, the whole room can hate it. But the question is whether we've checked the boxes that your city decided to lay out for us. And the staff report makes clear that we did. There is nothing in the staff report that speaks to any code requirements we do not meet. And so I apologize if this feels adversarial, but there's a lot that we've invested in this process, and so we're asking that the proper standards be applied, that it not just be sort of going, you know, from the cuff here on, we need to ask what the neighbors think. We need their input for evidence related to the application. And it's really important.
Can I get the full site? All I got was 315 Southern Second.
Yes, 480.
478.
Fourth DCA, 1975. I'll send it to you as well.
Rural Newtown, right?
What?
Rural Newtown?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Chair, if you allow me, like the last thing I will say here is staff do not provide perceptions or opinions. Staff provide the facts from the LDR, and on the screen is the LDR definition of a conditional use. Use that would not be appropriate generally or without restriction. So this is the LDR, so we don't have opinions here or rebuttal with the applicant, so that's the code.
But just to be clear, I read from the staff report that it said the use is an anticipated use in the zoning district. I quote from the staff report, and you rebutted me by saying that wasn't contemplated. I quoted the staff report. This is the point here. We have rights for this application, even if we hate the use. We checked out, we jumped through every single We checked it, we jumped through every single hoop that staff required along the way. We did everything that was required of us, and so we're asking for a fair shake in this review. Again, even if we all hate it, even if we all hate it. That's the idea.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Mulligan.
The biggest concern I have is, I know there was a traffic study done, but the safety, like, when I visited the site, I took my life in my own hands by taking that left on to Conklin, because traffic's like crazy like that. And I appreciate what the neighbors are saying about the safety. And also, when you leave boys, you can't go the other way unless you use that street to do a U-turn. Now, something's going to be in that property. Something's going to be in that property. And that, whatever it is, is going to have ingress and egress off Conklin. Conklin, is that how it's pronounced? So, I don't know, it feels like there has to be a light, otherwise it's a safety issue. A couple years ago, in West Palm Beach on Southern and Olive, Mint Echo Car Wash in West Palm Beach had such backup traffic that they had to buy the duplex right next door in order to get the cars off the road. I'm just, I'm just concerned about the safety of the traffic flow. That's my own thing. And it was kind of, and I know that any other thing can go in, in this zoning, but this is a conditional use for a reason, so we can weigh that.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just, if I could comment on the Mint.
Only if the board allows.
Excuse me, excuse me, just a second.
I know public comment is closed.
Is closed.
Correct, public comment is closed, thank you.
Can I just cite a land development regulation?
No. Public comment is closed, sir, I'm sorry.
Then he should be closed.
He's not the public, he's the applicant.
No, he only affects.
Our lawyer wasn't here.
He affects.
Continue.
Are you finished?
I could say more, but.
No, no.
Yeah, but please don't.
Who's next?
Mr. Coke.
I think he wanted to respond. Did you want to allow him to respond?
Oh, sorry, you wanted.
I just wanted to comment on the Mint Eco Car Wash. We're familiar with that site. It's a great example. They purchased the other, the duplex to provide for more queuing, because that site was a half acre or less. The site is a little bit under one full acre, and so there's a difference there. I just wanted to comment on that, that we're familiar with it, that's part of why they purchased that, was to address that issue, because it was so small to begin with, where the car wash was. I just wanted to address that, that's all.
Roger?
Thank you very much. Taking an architectural, site planning look at things, may I ask if any of the existing trees on the site, and I was fairly compelled by the young lady who stood up and talked about the wildlife and so on and so forth, but there was a slash pine, a slash pine, Mr., got stuck up above everything else.
Yeah.
It was, you know, so.
Huge.
I'm hoping the answer is yes, but I'm asking if any of the existing, and I scanned the Arbus report, couldn't answer it myself, are any of the trees being saved?
Unfortunately, no.
What's that?
Unfortunately, no.
Not one?
My name is Rob Dinsmore, for the record, with Urban Design Studio, 33401. Unfortunately, this, the site itself, while fully vegetated, is majority Brazilian pepper, Australian pine, you're right. There are some existing slash pines on site that are substantial in height. Unfortunately, the way they're laid out on the site, slash pines are not a species that can be relocated, they're tough to preserve, their root systems are very susceptible to impact of any sort of construction activity, compaction, grading. Unfortunately, they cannot be preserved where they are.
I guess architecturally speaking, and with respect to sound, they're putting an eight-foot-high wall along the entire property line that separates them from the tennis courts and the homes to that immediate backside, which are basically two folks. Is there any way that we can, is it eight, it's an eight-foot tall or ten, eight-foot tall? Sorry, eight-foot, I corrected myself, eight-foot. And I know in other cases, not necessarily this evening, but we've increased those walls to 10 feet in maybe a few cases, and I'm wondering if, you know, 2 feet would help a certain amount, you know? It's better than an eight-foot tall wall. I would just throw out the possibility that we seek, offer that as a mitigation in the positive direction for some sound. And then maybe leave that, if you want to comment on it, Mitch, maybe, I would love some feedback on that. And then, maybe Bradley can answer this. And Price, when you've talked about the servicing of the dumpster, whoever services it and whenever they service it, I think they have to back out or rotate and then drive out the drive in which they came in. So, they can't go through the tunnel, obviously. So I, I'm wondering, Bradley, why the dead-end parking, it comes within five or six feet of the entry drive to the tunnel, did you guys ever study that being connected so that there's, you know, an interconnectivity there? And would that make the flow within the site a little bit better, or does it compromise the operation of the business?
Over and over and over again, yes.
You studied it?
We did.
Studied it over and over?
It's, it's an adage that people that have worked with me know that I say all the time, there's never a good place for the dumpster. And we, we went through multiple gyrations and locations, whether it was a staff circulation concern, or if it was a security. When you open up that south end, it opens up for people just to be able to come in and, and use the vacuums, and, and so there's a business part of it, too. But part of our response, and the city had the same concern as you did, Mr. Coke, with the turning around, and we provided a maneuvering exhibit to show how the truck can, can make that maneuver, as part of the file.
I suspected that, but I wanted to ask.
Sure. One, one thing on your comment about the wall, and I, I'm, I'm going to check with staff, and I don't know if staff is prepared for this either, with going to 10 feet. I, I was thinking, I know in some places, once you get over a certain height for a wall, then it becomes a structure, and the structure then needs to meet the setbacks. And I was, something in my head is saying that eight feet was as high as we could go there. If, if not, then.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the maximum height allowance for walls in the LDR is eight feet. So exceeding anything higher than eight feet would likely require a relief in the form of a variance or a waiver.
One more thing about it, you can see on the plan there, so the, the yellow building, the northern two-thirds of it where it says one-story car wash, that's the tunnel, that's where the noise is. The, the southern part of it is office space, storage, mechanical, all enclosed. So that in itself is going to help buffer that, that noise.
Heightening of the wall, you know, you could also mitigate it by doubling up the trees wherever the concentrated noise level might be, which I would assume would be the west end of the tunnel. But, I mean, your studies prove that the decibel level is, meets the intent of the code.
Yeah, we're, we're working on, off of the city's PowerPoint, but within ours, once the time trigger deal is scrambled to get it in. One of the things that, as part of the, the slash pine situation is we're, we're mitigating, I think it's like 164 DBH of, of trees as part of this plan. It's pretty, pretty thick already. You know, I would defer to Rob to, but once you start clustering them too close, they don't survive either.
Right. I just thought I'd try to save that one tree.
Could I add, Roger, that tree is, looks like it's right on the property line. It's, and I can't.
I can't figure out where it is.
Yeah, well, when, when you go by this gentleman's house over there, it's, it's, looks like it's partly on his property. And I, I would think that there could be some design initiative here that could at least save that one.
Do you have a specific tree number that you were looking at? Because there are 11 trees and 18 palms that exist today.
It's probably 288 or 290. Maybe 291.
Substantially taller than the, than the.
Yes. So unfortunately, 288 and 290, they, they fall within that incoming drive aisle. And so it would, it would severely impact the function of the, of the property.
And narrowing that would cause problems with stacking.
Yes, sir.
Architecturally, the last thing, oh, two last things. The, Brandon, I'll interest this to you, the storefront system, the little storefront system that is, that is facing military, has a pedestrian door in it, and maybe staff can put elevation up of the.
West elevation?
Yes, so, yeah, so the upper right, the storefront, that's, that's to the right in that image, you know, it, it's super tall, and I'm assuming it's trying to, you know, flush out with the overhead garage door, and so on and so forth. And it goes into, what I'm assuming is kind of like a foyer and office. And then if you jump to the north elevation where the, you've got the bubble around the, you did a revision apparently at some point, the pedestrian door coming out of that same space. My minor criticism is that that storefront height is, is not similar to, to the, to its counterpart, which is on the front facade facing military. And, and so within that same space, they, there seems to be like a disparity. Those two should probably be the same, you know, with the, with, in every way, shape and form, including the height.
I, I think, is that door going to stay on the, on the north?
It's a man door for the safety plan for the fire. Does that make any sense? It would just be different scales as well.
Yeah.
If you put the on, you have a top rate, you have a safety.
Yeah.
The height is bothering me.
I think, okay, I, I think it's, I would have to look at the architectural, and you know, I'm not an architect. But, but I think the scale of those, those exhibits are, to, to fit the one that, that's the, the whole north frontage, I think it's.
Yes, right.
I'd like, I'd like to say it's all, it is at the same scale. Because you got the, you've got the pedestrian door and then the glazing above it.
If it's not at the same height, would you promise me that you'd make it the same height? Sure.
I mean, so we're not designing from the dais here.
So the compliment that I want to extend is the, is the canopy where all the vacuums are, is probably the most incredibly cool-looking thing on the site. Very, very organic, very cool, flies across the entire north facade facing Conklin, is extremely interesting. I hope it's as, as interesting in real life as it is on paper. And so I just wanted to compliment everybody on that. And the architecture in general is, is great, so the bigger issues are obvious.
Yeah, it's real cool if you don't live.
Okay, we're back to you.
I'm ready.
It's real cool if you don't live across.
So I, if I can.
Please limit, no, no more comments, public comment is closed, please.
So I'll start off by saying, first of all, I have some concerns, I do have some questions. I also want to let the public know, I feel your frustration as a public, the way the process works, it's just the way the process works. I've been on the other side as a resident for almost 20 years, when I was not on the board or on the commission, having to sit there and feel frustrated that you can't speak, but it is the way it is. It's the way our government is. They appoint, our city commissioners appointed, you know, this board, seven of us, to ask the right questions, and that's our job, we're charged with asking those questions to the staff, to the applicant, you know, and kind of sometimes we feel that, we can feel that energy, and ask those questions. So I get the frustration, but hopefully we're asking some of these questions that you're thinking and wanting, wanting to ask. If not, apologize, but we just, we can only do so much. My question is about, my biggest concern, and it comes to, we have to decide this conditional use, is based on the detriment of the community, and the only factor, the noise I get, and trust me, I live, my house abudes Military Trail, a mile up the road, I hear the traffic on Military at all hours, and I, so I get the noise. My concern is the safety aspect of it. And the trips, I've had to teach two teenage, two teenagers, that are now almost not teenagers, to drive in that area with the boys and everything there. And let me tell you what, as a parent, it's not an easy place to teach a child how to drive because of the conditions. So the question is, will this hinder, make it even, even worse? I know there was somewhat, a resident brought up, but I don't know when it was done last, a warrant study for a traffic light there, with the amount of U-turns coming out of the boys, hopefully, whether this project is approved here tonight or not, that a warrant study is done. And so people know is, nobody can just put up a light. I mentioned this in the last, why isn't there a light on Federal yet, where the, the other project was, is they have to do a warrant study before they can put a stop sign up, a light, anything like that. And, but I think conditions have probably changed since the last time it was done, hopefully the city can, no matter what happens here, can ask the county to do a warrant study there to see if that's necessary, after what we heard today about those U-turns. And it makes sense, because I leave the boys, and I don't go too often, because I, I, I like my life. But when I do leave the boys, you know, I get to go north, I don't have to make that U-turn. But I, I do see, I mean, I see so many people, they come out of the boys and they think they can go through those cones, or they literally will just sit in the middle of Military Trail and stop, which happens more often than not. It is a mess there. So I think a light is, is, no matter what here, is important. Now, if the light was already there, that might have helped with the safety, and we'd kind of know better how that works, if the light can even handle the U-turns. Because if a light can't handle the U-turns, you certainly can't handle it. When I went to do the site visit, I made that, like, I came, I was coming home from the airport with my son, so I decided, it was Saturday morning, let me take a look, and I made that left, and it, I actually thought to myself, do I really want to make this left here? Because it is not very safe at the moment. I have a question for Mr. Fazio. The trips, and I know you're not the engineer to the number here, but it says the max is 166 trips, right? Does 166 car washes a day make you profitable?
With what we're charging? Yeah. I mean, there's memberships that are going for $39.99 and the.
So is that, is that, my question, just an honest question, is that a realistic number? Because I, I feel like it's gonna, you need that number to be higher than that 166. Am I, am I wrong?
I would take that, yeah. I mean, I, you're asking me a question of my business.
I mean, you, you know these, you know, the car wash is better than anybody in this room, that's for sure. Do you really expect only 166 people a day, or do you really are hoping for 200 or 300 people to come a day?
Again, what I'm hoping for versus what the counties, how they do their numbers, you know what I mean? It's like, so, and again, I have not owned and operated in Palm Beach County, and it's a different model. It's a more expensive model, there's memberships and a membership cost, so it's a.
Just don't know, okay, I appreciate that.
If I had data to offer you, I would offer that, but I don't.
I mean, the only comparable that I've been able to go observe, and I did after I met with your staff, or the, not staff, with the attorneys, was go take another look at the car wash on Military, sorry, Lyons and Atlantic. I think it's the closest, it's a L car wash. And I think it's the closest in the area of that design. And I will tell you that there's a lot of traffic, a lot, I mean, a lot of cars going in. Obviously, there's a little bit more development out there than, than on Military, but it's, it's a lot of cars. I really have a lot of concerns with the traffic, just as far as the, the safety aspect for that community. I think you've done a decent job in mitigating the noise, I would like. I think you've done a decent job in mitigating the noise, I would like, I'm not sure about, you think, you brought up the hours, like 9:00 PM, who's getting a car wash at 9:00 at night? You know, I think if it is passed, I'd like to see the hours reduced as a condition.
So, can, can I offer a compromise? In the winter, 8:00, daylight savings to 9:00. So that's...
I mean, that's just...
That's six months of the year.
Up to the board, right now, like I said, I'm...
Okay, well, I'm, I'm putting that on the table.
Yeah, that's, that's, a lot of the questions I had, that's why I wanted to go last, have been, been asked. I don't have concern with the architecture, I think it, I actually appreciate that, the colors, like, that you, compared to, again, that other car wash I saw, it's like, you know, it's bright and ugly, and, you know, you would never want it in a neighborhood. This, at least, your colors are better. I just have a hard time overcoming that the traffic will not be a detrimental effect upon the stability of the neighborhood.
Can we talk about the traffic a little, it's important?
Only if you...
No, I'm good. I, I think I've heard it, I mean, I don't think you're gonna change...
Fair enough.
I, I just don't, I can't...
Okay, that's fine.
Let's see what he, the chair, maybe ask some other questions, but, I mean, you can let him address it, I don't care. I just, I haven't heard anything to overcome.
Yeah, it's my turn. I think that applicant's done a really good job, I think it's a really good plan for a car wash. The architecture's good, the flow's good, the stacking's good, all that stuff. But, it's noisy, there's light overflow, and there's traffic. And I'm looking at the comprehensive plan, NDC, no, sorry, 2.3 Western Neighborhoods. Protect and enhance the residential neighborhoods located west of I-95. Use the development review process to determine that development, redevelopment, adaptive reuse is consistent with and complementary to adjacent development, regardless of implementing zoning designations for each land use designation. In other words, what the comprehensive plan says to me is, it's gotta be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's why it's a conditional use. And it's a really tough decision, like I said, it's a really nice plan, but I don't think it's complementary with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods. And, so, that's my position. Now, we're at a point now...
Can I just make one clarifying comment? I mean, I'm, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because there was some confusion earlier, and there was some back and forth with the applicant's attorney, but we are applying our LDRs as they've been presented today.
And LDR says that it has to follow the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And I'm saying it does not follow the comprehensive plan.
Sure, I'm, I'm just referring to the conditional use findings specifically, that there was some debate about, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that.
If I can find those.
I wasn't making a comment about your comments.
If you can put those up on the...
They're on the...
I just, can I, I want to go ahead...
The LDR items. Compatibility with surrounding land uses. Separation and buffering from residential uses, noise control and operational impacts, lighting and visual intrusion, all those things are listed.
Yeah, Mr. J, I wasn't making a comment, true, yes, I wasn't making a comment on your comment, I was just making a comment that we're applying the LDRs as they were on the PowerPoint.
Absolutely. I'm gonna, I, I feel bad, I, you want to answer that question about the trap, my concern, I'll give you that time if you'd like.
Oh, the trap.
When I said no. This way, before I make my motion, you, I've given you every chance to rebut my opinion.
What I wanted to talk about was a safety improvement at that intersection. It most likely will not meet warrants. The warrants are typically based on the left turns out, and it would have to be approximately 70 left turns per hour for eight hours.
So they would not look at the U-turns there at all?
The county would look at crash data, because that is an important factor, so that is a factor, but the volume of U-turns is not typically one that the county looks at as well as the left turns into a site. But I wanted to talk about an alternate improvement, would be to restrict that median opening, to put a diverter in there so that you cannot make a left out on Conklin. That would then require the Conklin people all to make U-turns like the Sierra people.
Right, but they would have to go nor, you're saying they would have to go south and make a U-turn?
They would have to go south and make a U-turn.
Where they gonna make a U-turn with the boys there?
At, they, at the signal, the boys are, the boys are south of the signal, so, that, that is a safety improvement that could be done at that median opening, we just wanted to throw that, let you know that that's an option. But a signal warrant study could be done also.
I think we're gonna solve the...
I'm gonna, can I make a motion?
I'm, yeah, you, yes, please make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny a Level 4 site plan application and architectural elevations and landscape plan including a conditional use, Resolution Number 210-25 to allow a 4,207 square foot automatic car wash at 1415 South Military Trail by finding that the request and approval there is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and does not meet the criteria set forth in the Land Development Regulations.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny by Mr. Katz, seconded by Mr. Patton, and, Ms. Miller, would you call the roll, please?
So, yes to deny.
So, yes is to deny.
Yes is to deny.
Yes is to deny.
Jim Chard?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Deidre and Stawn?
No.
Roger Cope?
No, I'm in favor.
Price Patton?
Wait, I can't... Yeah, he said no, he's in favor of the project.
Roger voted no on the denial. Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes. The motion to deny passes five to two.
Five to two.
It's a tough one, this. I actually want a car wash first, like, please. So did Mike...
Yeah, at this point, we're, we'll take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Are we gonna take a five-minute recess?
I really do. I'm very disappointed in the trap. I'm very disappointed.
I'll tell her what I told, I'll tell you what I told her.
See, I personally want a car wash, just doesn't make sense. I want my back to go back, I like what they're doing, I wish they did a different spot. Thank you for understanding, it is. I kept going back and forth through the whole thing.
Okay.
That meeting is resumed. If you'd read the next item, eight C into the record, please.
Yes, I would like to enter file number PZ fourteen and fifteen dash twenty twenty five into the record. The request is for a level four site plan application for Fifth Third Bank and the applicant is here today to present.
We do an ex parte.
I thought, I thought I would go out and try to find one of those, just, just to see what one of them is. I couldn't find one.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Malaga.
I spoke with Mr. Scott.
I, I went by the site.
Okay. I went by the site.
I went by the site and I did talk to Mr. Scott, but not about this issue.
I did speak to Mr. Scott about the issue and I did go by the site. And there is one of the banks like that that I looked at as well that's right near the site. Right, not, near the last site we just talked about.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Scott, you're back on.
How you doing? Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Matthew Scott, zip code of three, three, four, four, six. I'm here on behalf of Fifth Third Bank. I want to call up the architect though that's going to be leading the presentation.
Sorry, I just want to make sure you were sworn in because that was so long ago now. Mr. The Architect.
I was sworn in.
Okay. Just.
Good evening, my name is Tim Loken. I am with BDG Architects and my zip code is two, eight, two, zero, two. So as you mentioned, we're here on behalf of Fifth Third Bank to present this proposed new branch bank on South Federal Highway. And do I have the clipper?
Yeah.
Okay, so the agenda basically is to talk about the purpose while we're here. There's some background information and data about the site. Make it clear what the waiver request is. And then we'll go into a bit of the architecture and site characteristics of the project. Okay, so we're here on behalf of the bank asking to construct a one-story standalone branch bank, which includes a drive-through with an associated waiver to reduce the minimum floor area from 6,000 square feet to a little over 2,500 square feet. As I mentioned, on South Federal Highway, the property is point eight seven acres. Its current land use designation is general commercial and the zoning district is planned commercial. The existing use, there's a vacant drive-through restaurant on the property. And so we're proposing a financial, excuse me, a financial institution with the drive-through. Here's the site highlighted in green. As mentioned, you can see South Federal Highway and Lynton Boulevard. One of the nuances of the site that you'll see under our proposed site is the cut through that occurs kind of at the, the right side of the green oval. Actually makes a straight pass to the Old Dixie Road. We'll get into that a little bit further when we get into the site planning. Okay, so, so more about the background. Being on the west side of South Federal, this site is highly visible on this major arterial road. And the site plan and design that we're presenting today, we believe is in alignment with Delray's, Delray Beach's long-term vision for revitalization and redevelopment of this corridor. A couple of computer-generated models of what the branch bank would look like. Again, we'll be demolishing the existing for a little over 2,500 square foot bank, including the two drive-through lanes. And this is kind of a spin around the building. So on the upper image, it's kind of a front door view. And on the lower image is if you kind of walked around the corner and you're getting a glimpse kind of onto the drive-through side of the building. From a site perspective, there'll be 15 total parking spaces and one of those will be accessible. And our drive-through queuing meets the 100-foot stacking requirement. We'll also be redesigning the stormwater. And the site incorporates two stormwater retention areas designed to retain onsite runoff and comply with the drainage and stormwater quality standards. Here you have the site plan that's colored with the landscape. You'll see South Federal is on your right with the ingress into the site planned south of the building. And as I mentioned, on the, the existing site condition, there is also a current entrance into the site about where the building is that provides that straight cut through to Old Dixie. And so we believe that we're improving the site, not only with the landscaping, the stormwater, but also in the maneuverability of the site. If somebody did want to come through with the intentions of, of cutting, cutting through, they'd be greatly, you know, slowed down just because they'd have to maneuver the turns within the site. This is just a glimpse of some of the landscaping examples that are being proposed for this project. And we can get into more detail if you'd like. And then more specifically about the waiver request, and I don't know if this is where you want to come in.
Sure. Yeah, so we, Matthew Scott again. We had a couple waivers. One was to the minimum floor area. I, I believe that the 6,000 square foot minimum is some zoning element from a bygone era where there was an intention of there being larger retail development. The other waiver relates to the parapet height. Your code looks for all mechanical equipment to be screened if it's on the roof. And so this was driven by the goal of screening, making sure that we're screening all mechanical equipment. What's interesting about, what's interesting about this waiver is that even though we're asking to exceed the maximum height of a parapet wall, we're thirty-something feet below maximum height anyway. So it's not that we're exceeding total height. But there are some criteria that we look for relative to waivers. And compatibility is a frequent consideration. I believe we had a slide about some of the development. So what, what's interesting is that the exception or the, the deviation from the rule has kind of become the norm in this area. So there's a Chick-fil-A nearby that's less than 6,000 square feet. And there are, it would seem, all new development in the area is less than 6,000 square feet. And so we think that there's a real strong argument for the compatibility of what we're proposing here for this site to be less than 6,000 square feet. But here is some more evidence to that point about the existing developments that do not meet that 6,000 square foot minimum requirement. You want to talk about the design for the scale though, and how you want it to be compatible?
Yeah, so we're going to start to kind of add into the design of the building here. So again, to the topic of the parapet, here you see a building elevation as well as a, a building section. On the lower image is the section and you see on the left side of the image, our roof steps down. So we're already kind of creating this front of house zone that has very tall ceilings, very wide open space. And in the rear of the building, a little bit lower space. That's your restrooms, the electrical rooms, the back of office where they keep all the cash. So those, that, that roof elevation actually comes down as you see depicted in that. And so we're already starting to conceal the mechanical units inherently because of the, the roof coming down. But to be, to be fully screened, as, as per your ordinance, we do have to be up at, I want to say it was at five foot 11, and I think the ordinance is at four foot. And so we just want to be, you know, good neighbors. It also doesn't just speak to concealing the mechanical units, but also speaks to the proportion of the building. We feel that if, if the parapet was much lower, it would, it would feel like a very small, small building, quite frankly. And so I think on this next slide, we kind of speak to the, the harmonious characteristics of scale and proportion. Just thinking of, you know, the length and width and height of the, of the space overall. And then just a slide here to talk about the materials of the building that we're proposing. So at the ground level, it's what we call the water table. That will be a brick material. And then the, the beige up above will be an, an Eiffel, painted a neutral, it's called Dover Sky. And then there's overhead canopies along most of the windows. And that's a, that's a metal panel, an ACM metal panel, which is an aluminum composite material. So it's one of the higher qualities of the types of metal panels on the market. And then the blue and the green is what, what we brand, what we call the wing walls. And so that's just kind of demarcating kind of a point of entry, like, hey, here's our front door as an identifier. There'll be signage on the building as well, but that goes through a separate signage permitting process.
And so that sort of sums up what we're here tonight to, to present. I just wanted to end with this color site plan with, with the landscaping to talk a little bit about Fifth Third Bank. As someone on the board mentioned, I actually worked on it. There is a, another location on West Atlantic Boulevard, sort of the westernmost point of the city. Though we worked pretty hard with your staff on designing that. We think that came out great. It's been very, a very popular branch. That's, I think, what led to identifying this site. As was mentioned, it, the site is rundown with a Burger King that's been closed for a few years now. And so I thought that we did a good job on site planning this one, in particular with positioning the drive-through in the back, in the rear. That's frequently a consideration with drive-throughs is their visibility and from the street. But then also I, I thought that our landscape architects' design of this sort of landscaping triangle in the frontage will objectively be a drastic improvement for this area of the corridor. Because it's a, it's sort of a heavily landscaped frontage right in front of the, the new building. So with that being said, we would respectfully request approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the request before you is for a level four site plan to construct a Fifth Third Bank located at 1820 South Federal Highway. The property is located in the planned commercial zoning district. The site is 0.87 acres and is currently, and currently onsite, there is a vacant restaurant. The property is near the southwest corner of Lynton and Federal. And the site is adjacent of another bank, a few restaurants, and an automotive dealership a little bit. Currently onsite, there's a one-story, 3,397 square foot building with a drive-through. The structure was constructed in 1979 and was formerly occupied by Burger King. It has been vacant since 2024. The requested to demolish the existing structure and construct a one-story, 2,578 square foot freestanding bank. The site will also accommodate a drive, two drive-through ATM lanes and 15 parking spaces. The applicant is requesting relief to LDR Section 4412 F2 to reduce the minimum floor area from the required 6,000 square feet to 2,578 square feet. The board will also need to determine if the additional height for the parapet, parapet is appropriate for the site. And also the level four requires recommendation from PZB and final action from City Commission. The proposed use is allowed in the PC zoning district. The water, sewer, drainage are all provided onsite. And the traffic performance standards are met with a reduction of 673 daily trips from the existing use. The proposal complies with the standards set in Article 3.2. And the conversion from restaurant to financial institution is not anticipated to affect the stability and safety of the surrounding area. The proposed financial institution is compatible with the adjacent properties, providing a service and strengthening the commercial character of the corridor. The proposed lot coverage, open space, and setbacks are in compliance. The overall height is in compliance. However, the parapet exceeds the maximum by one foot and 11 inches. This exception requires a determination by the board pursuant to LDR Section 434 J3A. The floor, the floor area is also smaller than the required minimum. Both the relief and determination will be discussed further. The proposed lighting, parking, bicycle parking, and stacking are in compliance. And then for the waiver pursuant to LDR Section 4412 F2, any freestanding structure must have a minimum floor area of 6,000 square feet. The intent of the PC zoning district is to encourage development of retail, office, and other commercial activities on larger sites, typically greater than five acres. The applicant is requesting to reduce the minimum floor area to 2,578 square feet. The site is 0.87 acres surrounded by similar, smaller parcels with freestanding structures under 6,000 square feet. The board should consider the following. Does the request meet the intent of the PC zoning district? Is the request appropriate due to the site constraints? And is the proposed structure consistent in scale, function, and design with the surrounding development? The following are your waiver findings. It shall not adversely affect the neighboring area. Not, it shall not significantly diminish the provisions of public facilities. Shall not create any unsafe situations and shall not result in the grant of a special privilege. The proposed landscape has been reviewed for compliance and meets the standards in LDR Section 4616. They will be removing 15 trees, three palms, and three invasive trees, which the invasive trees are not counted towards mitigation. The removed trees meet our mitigation standards either by doing the one-to-one ratio, one-to-one replacement or by the DBH depending on the condition rating of the, of each tree. And they will also be preserving 11 trees and 14 palms. The minimum architectural requirement states that the development must show proper design concepts and be appropriate for the surrounding area. The following criteria must be met. The proposal is with good taste and design. It will not depreciate the appearance and value of the area and is harmonious with the surrounding area. As for the height exception, the overall height is met, but the parapet utilized for the rooftop, rooftop equipment screening exceeds the four-foot maximum. The parapet ranges from one foot to five foot 11 inches. And the board must determine if the additional one foot and 11 inches is compatible with the surrounding area. These are the proposed elevations. The top is the elevation facing federal. And here are the north and south elevations. These are your board motions and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing no one, public comments closed. Mr. Coe.
Do you want to see if there's rebuttal?
Oh, I think you're right. Is there any rebuttal or cross-examination of nobody? No, okay. Now we can go to board comments. Not in a hurry.
No, it's a great, great little building. Super well-designed, very tight. First time I've ever seen an architect use the, the, this proportionate. What do you call that?
The golden proportions?
That was the golden, that's not the golden triangle, but it's a golden, it's a golden nautilus, whatever. First time I've ever seen that, so, but it's pretty cute.
Just proportions in nature, right?
It's a piece, it's organic. So very well-designed little building. I'm glad it's not 6,000 square feet. Really nice layout on the site with the green space pushed toward Federal Highway and the, you know, their interface with Chick-fil-A. You feel like Chick-fil-A is right on top of the property line right there with, with, you know, we all, we've all gone through the drive-through. It's very awkward, sort of on their part. So this might in some way kind of help that, but I think it's beautiful. It's a great little bank and I, I'm completely supportive of the two waivers, including the, the parapet height. That's such, such a minor issue.
Ms. Malaga.
Love it.
Okay.
No problem with the reliefs.
Mr. Stroud. Mr. Patton.
No problems.
Mr. Chard.
Somebody has to stand up.
And you're going to guess it's going to be about trees.
Well, let's start, you know, I think I'll take his suggestion. You know, one picky question is why you call a bald cypress non-native?
I'm glad you asked because that makes it worthwhile that my landscape architecture of all this way here.
My drive over. Patrick Cunningham, three, four, two, three, four. I'm the landscape architect for the project. It is a typo that I saw last night for the first time. And as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, you can see right here.
Okay, I'm done.
No, it is a type of grass layer.
So how hard did you try to save some of the trees on there? When I drove around in the property today, there were some big, old trees that had all sorts of bends and character to them.
And, and obviously they haven't been taken care of or pruned or anything like that.
But I think some of them, DBH must have been two feet in diameter. It's certainly big.
No, they're, they're not that big, but they're big. And, and so all five mahogany's that are up against Federal Highway are directly underneath the power line. So in 1979, when this was developed, FPL could care less what you were putting near the power lines. And now if you look at it sitting on Federal Highway, and we have a, there's a, forgive me, there is a picture of the front of the facade. You can see how they've radically trimmed these mahogany's to avoid the power lines. You can see how they've radically trimmed these mahogany's to avoid the power lines. And they're right there. And so, all those trees, four of which, there's five trees we're remaining or that we're removing, the mahogany's, four of which are under 50% ratings. They're failing. They're dying. The other trees, there are eight trees on site that are under 50% that are dying. The sable palms that are close up against the building, they're so close to the building that they're... That we're going to destroy, not destroy, raise, and that we can't save these trees with them this... We could move them, but the likelihood of them surviving is pretty low. So we would be coming back, we'd be co-violated, and we would have to replace them anyway. And the sable palms are the only two palms we could relocate based on the arborist's report. And then, there is a green buttonwood in the back of the building that does have character. But what's happening is, is that over time, they've done head-cutting, which is not thinning out the tree. They've been trying to make the canopy fuller. And in doing so, if you've looked closely at it, it again is lopsided against or away from the building. They've been cutting the building. So the structure of that tree is failing too. It's at 55%. Not, you know, it's still a little bit better than the other trees.
How do you determine that percentage?
Well, the arborist's report, they flat-out come out with a... I have it right here. I did not do the arborist's report. I'm a landscape architect. But they flat-out come out with, in accordance with the CTLA 10th Edition Guide for Plant Appraisal. Health condition ratings are in accordance with the CTLA 10th Edition Guide for Plant Appraisal.
So it's an objective determination that you can't...
Well, he is a certified arborist, so, I mean, he definitely, his profession relies on him being...
Okay. Okay. I was glad to see you saved the tababoya. That was...
I love tababoyas, absolutely.
I wish they were native.
The rest of the site, the south property line, the west property line, and the north property line, we maintain that buffer as best we could. There's two trees in the north buffer that are failing. And part of the tree mitigation that we're doing is we're supplementing the north buffer to add addition, you know, just adding trees where we could as part of the mitigation requirements. So, in the end, we're keeping 25 trees and palms, 11 trees, 14 palms. And we're proposing 40 trees and 20 palms. So there's 60 plants in the end. 60 trees and palms.
And those are all generally 16 feet tall?
All the palms.
Spread of 7 feet or so?
Yeah. Oh, all the trees that are required by the city are 16 feet tall, they're 3-inch DBH, and there's 6, I believe, 6-foot spread.
And what's going to be the ratio of canopy trees to palm when you're done?
Well, I think I just said it, so it's 2 to 1.
In terms of coverage?
Well, 2 to 1. I mean, there will be 40 trees and 20 palms. And the majority of the palms are existing. We're mitigating for 2 palms and we're adding 4 palms.
I guess that's all of my questions about trees.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I do have some other questions.
Oh, don't. You're not limited to trees.
They're trying to pigeonhole me here. Could we see a site plan with the traffic routing through the property?
Yeah, on our presentation, that colored site plan might work well. While she's pulling that up, if my civil engineer speaks, I just want to mention, did you swear in when the group was doing it? Or do you need to...
No, I didn't.
So if he does come up, we'll do a swear for him. But what was your question? Maybe for me or maybe for civil?
Well, just walk me through. If I... When I drive in, how do I get, first of all, to just the parking area so I can walk in? And secondly, to the ATMs and then exit?
Okay. So, Plan South, you see the green car and the red car. So that kind of represents the car. Actually, is this all ingress? Is that ingress-egress?
For the front driver.
Come on.
Yeah, come on.
Oh, does it work?
It's working.
Oh, look at that. Okay.
You got it down.
I don't want to misspeak.
It's okay. Please raise your right hand by the authority vest to me, the notary of the state of Florida. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and talking about the truth?
Diogo Rodriguez, 33602. And so, could you repeat the question one more time? Sorry.
I'd just like to know the route through the property. Because it seems like you have to go a long ways around to get to where you want to be. And I'm just wondering, that's a very narrow lot. Isn't there some issue of the difficulty of routing cars, not to mention fire trucks, through it?
So we do show a truck path, part of the civil submittal, to ensure that the fire truck can navigate through the site adequately. And I'm not sure if you can see correctly. I can't, and my glasses are on right now. But there is, we did provide a pedestrian connection that leads all the way to the trash enclosure. So patrons would be guided to go on that pedestrian connection, and then they can go ahead and go to their parking spaces. The ADA space... The ADA space itself has its own crosswalk leading from the building. And again, the color is, it's white on this plan, so you can't really see it. So that's an error on our end. But there is a crosswalk that leads from the accessible parking space right there, we're highlighted, into the building. And then the crosswalk that goes in front of the drive-through itself that leads to the trash enclosure. Now, to go to the cars themselves, again, like you mentioned, this is a narrow site. It's pretty hard to provide a pedestrian connection itself unless we were to put one on the green space in that landscape buffer that's Plan South. But we do believe, and I believe staff would agree, that this general site plan in terms of navigating is safe for not only pedestrians but vehicular traffic. And like my colleague mentioned earlier, the removal of one driveway, sorry, on the northern part cuts that through pass that's going to the... What is Old Dixie?
Old Dixie.
Old Dixie. So we did try our best to go ahead and orientate the site to be safe, and...
Wouldn't you want some of your people to exit into Old Dixie rather than Federal? It's usually a...
They can. They can. There is a through.
It's just not a straight shot, which I think encouraged quick shortcuts.
And this is actually a lessons learned for myself to provide better colors so you can see that as well. But that access drive that you do see on the west side, that does go all the way down to Old Dixie. And then there is also a connection that goes to the Chick-fil-A to the north.
Can you sort of indicate where the water retention areas are, the plantings?
So there is one? There's one right there, correct. And then one right in the middle next to the drive-through, correct.
And the water retention tanks?
No, no, this is just a pond.
Is it a pond? Is it dry?
No, it's a dry pond. It's a retention pond. It's still considered a pond, but it's a...
Until it rains a lot.
Yeah.
Then it becomes a wet pond.
Yeah. Everything's in accordance, and we do take that into consideration. But yes, it is a retention system.
Two more questions. Generally, on Federal, we tend to require bus stops. And there is a bus stop pad near there. I'm not sure if it's by Chick-fil-A or down by you. Is there any... And this is really a question of staff. Is there any requirement as a... From the city for that? And if not, is there an in-loo payment?
I believe, so this did go through the full technical review committee. I don't believe that that was one of our comments for the, or requirements for the bus stop. If it was a requirement, we would have put an in-loo fee, but that was not required for this project.
And why would that not be? There are plenty on the east side and very few on the west side.
There's specific criteria within the LDR regarding when bus shelters should be placed and when they shouldn't be, when payments should be required and when they're not. So our engineer is very thorough on that. So as Suzie said, if it was required, it would have been required, and you would have seen it tonight.
I would disagree with Roger a little bit on that parapet. It's almost 2 feet above regulation, and I'm not sure that is required. I can see it for proportions from an architectural point of view, but I'm not sure that's required to really screen the accessories on the roof, particularly from a site angle point of view.
Your comment is valid. If you were standing on the ground, that parapet could be lower, and with the view angles, you wouldn't see the mechanical screening. Proportionally, as a design of the building, we feel that for this, because we offer the generous overhead space in the customer-facing side, we drop that roof down in the back of house. If we were to keep that roof going the same elevation across the building, we would be in a much different situation where then the mechanical would be up. If that roof was, you know, continuous, we would inherently be raising the roof itself two more feet, and we would kind of be back into this conversation that we're in again. So I think we're coming initially presenting the building in the proportions and the scale of the building as designed and requesting the waiver.
Okay. And I don't know if this is fair to ask, but is that where the sign is going to go? I'm just a little suspicious. In some cases, we've had parapets made quite large in anticipation of a large sign.
Let me see if the 3D...
Well, the sign isn't in front of the board right now. That's a separate review.
I was going to say, all I can present is where signs typically would go, but they've not been permitted. Is that okay? Yeah.
So, correct. The sign requires a separate permit review, so it will go through the permit process. It will be determined that it's meeting the requirements in 467? 467 for our signage, so that is a separate review process.
No, I fully understand that. I'm just wondering if that might be some of the reason for the size of the parapet.
Well, again, another part of the reason, this building's only 18 feet tall. And so, when you're up against other commercial properties, you really do get into a harmony of scale conversation. And where is that dang slide at? You know, things like the Chick-fil-A, the Pancake House, you know, the roof on that Chick-fil-A very well could be about where that Chick-fil-A sign is, and the rest of that is parapet. It gives a street presence, right? And so, to be adjacent to these other neighbors and to be at that, to potentially be at a lower scale, just proportionally is just a little bit off.
I will also just put my presentation, because I think the staff's presentation has the drawing that you're referencing, just so you can also see it too.
Okay.
Oh, that's an example of the front door signage, yeah. That's what he's asking, I think. Answered your question.
Thank you. I yield.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I feel opposite, Mr. Chard, on the parapet. I like the fact that we're putting in our rules to more cover these un-gasly, you know, machineries that all just, you know, they're not painted, they just rust. And some of the older buildings, you can see the difference. So I'm glad that staff has made that. Maybe we need to look at rules to make it even, you know, make it easier to do this. Because I'm never a fan of waivers unless it really makes sense, and to me, it definitely makes sense. I'm also huge favor of reducing concrete from 6,000 feet to 2,578 feet. And all those trees and greenery on that space is a huge improvement. You know, because everywhere else that you're seeing, you know, the Chick-fil-A, it's cars everywhere. You've got car dealerships there. So it's going to be nice to have some greenery somewhere in that little section, because that would literally be the only place with some trees left. So I'm really glad about that. I am going to send the recording of this meeting to another land use attorney who told us under six months ago that no banks were opening up in Delaware anymore. We had to rezone a property away from being a bank. So it shows you, no matter the... It's pretty funny. There's no car... We don't need enough vehicle lanes because they're not going to build, nobody's going to drive cars yet. We keep improving car dealerships, and banks are coming. So anyway, I do appreciate it. You did a good job with the one on West Atlantic. I think this is actually a lot better, because that one is abutting of a shopping center, so you couldn't put any greenery really. But this one, you did a great job with the space, and I am definitely in favor.
Okay, yeah. I really don't have anything to say. I like it. I think relief on the parapet is entirely appropriate. It makes the building look good. It's not really a waiver. It's just, hey, go ahead and do it. The waiver on the size, 6,000-foot building there would be ridiculous, and it's appropriate to the neighborhood. And so, can we get a motion somewhere?
Move to recommend City Commission approval of a Level 4 site plan modification with architectural elevations and landscape plan for Fifth Third Bank to demolish the existing ugly building at 1820 South Federal Highway and to construct a one-story standalone branch bank with a drive-through with an associated waiver to reduce the minimum floor area from 6,000 feet to 2,578 square feet pursuant to LDR 4.4.12-F2 by finding that the request is consistent with the land development regulations and comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Katz, second by Mr. Chard. Will you call a roll, please? Ms. Miller.
Jim Chard.
Yes.
Mitch Katz.
Yes.
Deirdre Strong.
Yes.
Roger Coe.
Yes.
Price Patton.
Yes.
Judy Malika.
Yes.
Gregory Snyder.
Yes. That motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We need a new dog groom.
Does the break-in bring treats for our dogs? Is the question.
Yes. They should have.
I drove by it, yeah. It looks...
It's ready to open up.
It's already open, I know. That's why it's on tomorrow's commission meeting. It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It's supposed to have been a... We messed up.
Or they did. I don't know, something's...
Or they did.
Somebody did. Because it's on...
Can we?
I've never seen anything on our agenda and the next day on the commission.
Okay. Can we have item 8D?
Yes, good evening. Okay, this item, 8D, we're reading into the record. Oh, I don't have my file number here. I have my laptop if you need to look at it. Second, sir.
What is it? Oh, it's not on there.
Do you want me to read it? It's PZ...
Oh, here it is.
I'm going to read it for Rebecca.
32225.
It's file number PZ0000322-2025. Thank you. This is a conditional use request to allow pet grooming and pet services establishment, and we have the applicant here to do a presentation.
Thank you. And we have the ex parte. Mr. Katz.
I did drive by this weekend. Actually, I wanted, I was curious, because I wanted to see what else was in that plaza. And I see it's, looks like it's the last thing going in that plaza. But, so I did do a drive-through and look. I do have a question later on that it looks like it's not coming for approval.
Yeah, well...
Why don't we press on with this?
I drove by it today too and had the same impression.
Yeah, I not only drove by, parked my car and walked over and had a look in the window.
Please tell me, like, nothing was happening, yes? Nobody was in there?
It was locked.
Okay, good.
And...
I gave them instructions, so...
No, no ex parte.
Mr. Strong.
I drove by the site.
Mr. Coe. Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead.
If you want, I can go ahead and acknowledge the elephant in the room, so you don't have to. So this applicant has actually done everything they needed in terms of site plan approvals and everything that was needed to be done to open. The fault lies with a staff error that missed, this is a conditional use. So when she, we discovered that when she was denied for her business tax receipt. That's when we rushed them on the agenda tonight and on commission tomorrow, because we didn't want to be the reason to stand in the way of a business. So I'll let her proceed now.
Yeah.
That's basically it.
It's nice to know, having looked in the window, that it's not your fault.
No, really, we did everything. I mean, we started this in 2024, so we were quite surprised when we came to the end, but Rebecca, Alexis, everybody, Rafiq, they've all been very wonderful and helped me get to a point. I'm Erica Hirst, by the way, 34983. I'm coming from Port St. Louis. Okay. I don't ever do this and I don't ever make these, so I apologize in advance. I brought my husband, because he kind of does know this, okay?
We don't know.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, so wonderful. So this is all about meeting the LDRs. You know, the space already exists. It's a retail chain, but it is boutique. Everything is done by appointment, so while the space is around 1,600 square feet, 624 retail, about 1,000 of it is grooming, but you'll notice on the floor plan, it's sort of separated. I don't know if this really matters to anybody, but there's no windows to protect really the animals and the groomers themselves, so that nobody gets hurt, like, they don't want any animals being spooked while somebody's out at the window, right? So you can't really see in the back. And what you see up front is really all the retail, super cute. They do have bakery treats, but we do not bake on-site, and then they have, you know, typical pet retail items for sale as well. As I mentioned before, everything is appointment-based, so that maintains the traffic flow. You're not looking at, you know, lots of people coming in and out. We do not board at all. There is no overnight boarding, none during the daytime, except for maybe the small time while they're waiting to be groomed. We don't have any outdoor activities. All the operations are indoor. Let's see. So this was just so you guys could kind of get an idea of what it looked like. Again, super cute, all those pre-baked treats out there. Yeah, look at the donuts. I've only been to one. I permitted about 15 of these. I'm a permit expediter, by the way, guys, so that's really what I do. But they needed help when it came to this, so I offered to do some assisting. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, controlled grooming appointments, three to five employees per shift, quiet, odor-free, insulated. And then low intensity... I'm sorry, I feel like I'm being very redundant, but I think I'm supposed to be. Seven spaces are required, but there's plenty of space in terms of parking spaces there, so we meet that requirement, staggered drop-offs with the appointments. Weekly deliveries, they set about one to two, but they're small. It's a very small location, so whatever they're receiving in is tiny. Again, fully enclosed, insulated, no detectable noise or smell to neighbors, compatible with all adjacent PC-zoned uses. We remembered the cats. And then here, I just kind of went over all that same information again, just to make sure that we were touching on all of the LDRs that were brought to our attention. So I think that's it. The end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Osory?
Okay, I'll be really quick here. And I suppose ex parte is in order, because I have been to a Wolfgang Bakery in Fort Lauderdale about six months ago. My dog enjoyed the sheep ear that he got there, but...
So good and so cute.
So again, this is a recommendation to the commission on the conditional use for pet services, the retail and grooming. As Ms. Hirst said, it's just grooming and retail cell of pet supplies, no overnight boarding, which would be a separate conditional use request if they were to ever want to do that. There's no outside use areas and it's no additional floor area. The hours of operation meet the requirements for pet services facilities. Let's see, she did a great overview of her, the business, so I'm not gonna get into that much. But again, it's here, within the four corners overlay district, planned commercial zoning. This was previously a medical office for quite a number of years. It's located in the corner of the plaza, which is anchored by Sprouts. You can see here, again, the floor plan, the retail is located near the front of the bay with the grooming in the back. And the findings have to be made that a conditional use will not have a significantly detrimental effect upon the stability of the neighborhood or hinder the development of nearby properties. This is surrounded by other commercial uses, with the exception of some multifamily to... Excuse me, to the south of it, but everything in this area is commercial, retail, restaurant-type uses. This is the preferred zoning district, and this is a use that is, again, allowed through the conditional use process that is here before you. Go quickly through concurrency. This is an established plaza with a comparable use. Our comp plan supports job creation and compatible land uses that are consistent and support retail within adjacent to residential areas. The LDR has a very specific set of findings and requirements related to the pet uses. So as you can see, there's certain of these criteria that don't even apply, but it meets the standards for parking, full enclosure, the fire-rated walls that buffer for sound, and the hours of operation. So then you have your findings here, and we're both available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thanks. Any rebuttals? Okay. Mr. Chard?
Oh, yeah. Can you ask if there's... Did we ask for public comment?
Oh, no. Is there any public comment?
It's empty.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. Now it's time for board, and we'll let Mr. Katz go while his mouth's full.
Or start over here.
I think it's great.
You good?
Was it... I did drive by, because I was curious, the... And I saw there's a vet in the same plaza, so I'm guessing it's a good compatible use. I don't think they do the same thing. I just think that plaza's showing that with a good anchor, how you can literally transform an intersection. I mean, that plaza is just really... The last thing we gotta fix is the barking, another barking issue that looks terrible there, but otherwise, no, it looks great. I saw it from the outside and...
Thank you.
If I go there with my dog, it'll be a very expensive trip.
Yes, it will. They are expensive, but they're so cute and they're good, so the dogs say.
Couple questions.
No trees outside.
There are no trees. And I was like, all night, I'm like, oh, no, he's gonna ask me stuff I don't know. But do ask and I'll do my best.
Do you have pine-scented?
Yes, we hung up a few of those, yeah. We're gonna get extras, though, only native species.
So just tell me a little bit about this sound buffering, so that barking isn't heard outside.
Well, there's really not that... I think we only have three tables or so for grooming, definitely three tubs, and we're not really boarding the animals, so they really shouldn't be. I mean, not only, I would say, just the dryers and whatnot going on, but it's my understanding that the one-hour fire-rated safety wall is enough to reduce the noise that might be presented, just based on the amount of staff, animals, you know, and again, that they're not there long-term.
All right. And I heard you say you're not doing boarding, but how about daycare?
No.
Are people gonna be dropping off at this?
No. It should be, it's by appointment only. So again, it's my understanding, after speaking with the VP, that it's... They make an appointment, they drop their dog off. I'm not saying there won't be any overlap, because I think that would be unrealistic, but there shouldn't be any long-term... I mean, I would imagine, and again, I can't really speak to it, but no more than an hour, like, if somebody left their pet, didn't get there in time or whatnot, they're not standing around waiting for them, is my point.
They don't drop them off when they go to Sprouts?
Well, they very well may, if they plan their day accordingly. Yeah.
They... I drove around the back and I didn't see where trash is going, and I'm assuming animals create a lot of trash.
So I actually don't... I'd have to pull up the floor plan for the permit that we approved, that we had done, but we didn't do a specific dumpster, enclosure, or anything like that. And it's my understanding, again, that they have a special service that picks up animal waste. That was what I was...
Is that sort of on a daily basis?
I'd have to find out. I honestly don't know if it's on a daily basis. I can try and reach the owner now if you'd like, but I mean, I would... We, again, it's a retail chain, so they are monitored by the franchise itself, and I'm sure that they have a policy in place for that. And I can get you more specifics on it.
All right. And I have a question for staff. Our package did not include a site plan, is that the usual situation?
That's correct. It was just embedded in the staff report itself, screenshot into it. I think we initially, the first draft I posted, for some reason, it got deleted when I was doing the final edits, so I had to repost. So if you printed an early version from the first one that was posted, you wouldn't have it, but it is in the staff report that's currently up now, and it would be the one that you see on the screen before you.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, just for clarity, I mean, the only thing in front of them is the conditional use aspect, not the site plan.
Yeah, so my technical question was, for conditional use, you do not need a site plan, is that what you said?
Not if it's going into an existing bay like this.
Okay, okay. And with all of the pet care and the hair flying around and so forth, do you have filters so that doesn't?
So in my experience, like I said, I think I've done about 12 or 15 of these. They have very specific hair traps that are required, not only for the tubs themselves, but for the duct work as well, to prevent that from being an issue. I'm certain that we would have provided cut sheets for the specific exhaust fans or however they were, and I don't remember their numbers right now, but again, it would be in the file. I think somewhere I provided the permit number that was associated with the project, but again, if you need it, I can certainly get it for you. But that, again, is a common practice throughout, especially because Miami, with their grease trap situation, and you know what I mean, it just kind of becomes an overall...
Right.
...practice, because changing it every time is not worth it. Yeah?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Patton?
Put back the thing on page three, under the solid waste thing. I think if you're... It says, you know, it says 10.2 pounds of waste per year for the grooming. I think you mean 10.2 pounds per square foot of waste per year for the grooming.
May I put this in there? Hold, please. Where is it? I did this.
I did, that was my...
Oh, okay.
So, yes. No, so I think that's right. Pounds per square foot per year. So, yes, that was...
Just want to point that out. Otherwise, no questions.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Strong?
No, I think Jim answered my question about the sound buffering, so I'm good.
No questions.
Okay, I really don't. It's kind of like, makes me regret being a cat owner and not a dog owner.
Not a dog owner? I mean, they have the cats there, although I'm not really quite sure what they groom the cats, but...
Yeah, I don't think the cats like...
They don't really like it much there.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. That'd look good. Yeah, and you answered my question about why it's...
Yeah, I know.
Looks like it's already open when it isn't open.
You want to talk about the panic that ensued when that occurred?
And in my little over three years here, you're the first person with sparkle on...
Oh, thank you for noticing. I like to sparkle.
You should see the dogs.
Yeah, exactly.
When they leave, we spray them with a little glitter.
Good, yeah.
So I'll make a motion?
Please.
Okay, move to recommend approval to the city commission of a conditional use requested for Wolf, Woof, Woof, Gang Bakery and grooming to provide pet services at 5048 West Atlantic Avenue, finding that the request is consistent with the land development regulations and the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Chard, second by Ms. Malika, and Ms. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Jim Chard?
Yes.
Mitch Katz? Deidre Strong?
Yes.
Roger Cope?
Yes.
Price Patton?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder?
Yes, that's approved, seven to zero.
I really want to celebrate, you guys. This is so stressful.
Good luck with the commission.
Yes, I know. I need some guidance, by the way, on that.
You're doing fine. Do it the same.
Okay, good.
Okay. Now we can do some LDR amendment. Really excited.
I can just say that we are very glad to have Madison Brown, our development permits manager, here to go over this amendment. She works with the variances that are being requested quite frequently for the docks, and she's a boater, and she knows a lot about waterways and all that, so I'll give it over to Madison.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Madison Brown. My title is Development Permit Manager, and I would like to formally enter file number PZ-000246-2025 into the record. The request before you is a city-initiated request, and a much-requested, staff-initiated request, to amend Article 7.9 for docks, dolphins, finger piers, and boat lifts, repealing and replacing the existing regulations in their entirety. We are also amending accessory use regulations in certain residential zoning districts in Article 4.4 based zoning district for consistency with Article 7.9 and by adopting new regulations for docks, finger piers, marinas, and dolphins in Appendix A definitions. The reason for this staff-initiated amendment is that the existing standards are too strict. Several cases have forced applicants to seek relief. After the governing agency of the water bodies, such as Florida Department of Environmental Protection, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, have already granted approval for said structures as they... You are required to obtain their approval prior to coming to the city. And frequent relief requests to a specific code section, in this instance, it's 7.9, 7.96, and 7.98, indicate that the regulations are in need of recalibration. Since my tenure at the city, I started last summer in 2024, I have seen... I've seen three variances and four waivers to this specific section, which is a lot. And I have a handful right now in Lake Ida that all need relief as well. Six out of the eight proposed structures need relief. So as shown on the map to the right, the intracoastal waterway, also called the ICW, has widths that vary from 130 to 780 feet. The branches of finger canals that also dot the intracoastal waterway range in width from 70 to 130 feet. Currently, we have a fixed number for docks and finger piers, particularly finger piers to extend from a property line. That set figure is 25 feet. No matter where you are, it's 25 feet. If you are somebody with a large lot with frontage on the intercoastal and you receive approval from the Army Corps of Engineers for a finger pier, which is a dock that extends perpendicular from your lot line, for example, say you receive approval for 40 feet, wonderful, that's great. You still have to get a variance from us in order to build that structure, even though the Army Corps and DEP gave you the green light to construct it. So we took that in mind as part of their review process and decided that we would base this off of a percentage, so 25% are width of the... 25% of the width of the waterway or less. Granted, these folks are also receiving their federal or state approval. We are trying to mirror their approval requirements. I also wanted to share some photos of the waterways here in Delray Beach. We have Lake Ida, that's under the jurisdiction of Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The intracoastal waterway and the finger canals are both under the jurisdiction of Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Florida, the Jacksonville chapter of the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And we also have a few lots down south at the C-15 Canal. Any marine structures over there are required to be permitted by South Florida Water Management District. South Florida Water Management District, DEP, and Army Corps of Engineers all have very similar requirements for docks, boat lifts, finger piers. They're all quite similar. So I wanted to take some time to kind of point out another issue that we are addressing with this amendment, is that structures as shown above are not permitted under our current regulations.
Say it again?
Structures similar to this configuration are not permitted under our current regulations. There are several folks along the ICW and on Lake Ida that have configurations such as these, come in for permits with their approval. Sorry, guys, you need a waiver and a variance after spending, however, in doing what they've Sorry, guys, you need a waiver and a variance, after spending, however, in doing what they've done to get to this point. Um, so we have updated the language to include configurations such as the finger pier and dock, as shown on the bottom left, or the reverse of that configuration with a, you know, a nominal dock protruding out from the seawall, with an accessory finger pier, no more than eight feet wide, you can attach a boat lift, pilings, it depends on what kind of boat you have. Not every boat needs to go in a lift, not everybody wants to put their boat in a lift, but we are trying to accommodate multiple scenarios without forcing property owners and contractors to seek relief. We also decided to take this opportunity to codify marinas and include them in the LDRs, because we have six or seven marinas in the city, I believe. I'm colorblind, so this map is not good for me, because I can't see all the dots. Um, however, we took this time to include marinas and add technical requirements for replacing marinas or building new marinas. Uh, there have been a few permits that have come in already that I've reviewed, that is, maintenance, repair and replace of the existing configuration. They received federal and state approval, and we, we ultimately approved it as it was maintenance. However, that Ted said to me, we need to add some of this language, so if somebody buys, say, an empty lot on the water and decides to have it turned into a marina and develops it that way, we have language for that. Um, and then, we also wanted to point out that these LDR, that these proposed amendments, uh, meet the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Um, and we are anticipating, uh, first reading in December 2025 and second reading in January in 2026. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Bryce, why don't you start?
You know, I guess, as long as it's, um, as long as the City Commission initiated or City Staff initiated, I think you guys know where the problem is, and, and it's not, we're not changing anything dealing with, um, uh, uh, FIND or, uh, you know, I, I hear it goes to waterway.
No, sir.
Those approvals always have, those are all, they're starting to continue to get those approvals, right?
Yes, sir.
All for streamlining the process.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah?
No, I'm, I'm badged it, I wish it had been done sooner, so you wouldn't get as many, uh, variance requests, but, but it never got here now, as opposed to sometime in the future, so, good job.
Thank you.
Same, well done, good for doing it.
Roger?
Matt, uh, Matt, what is the dolphin? What is a dolphin?
That's the. That's the thing to do.
Flipper, Flipper, remember Flipper?
No, Flipper wasn't a dolphin.
No, no, let her answer it, let her answer the question.
In my humble experience, growing up as a third-generation Floridian, a dolphin to me was a cluster of pilings that you saw around the port of Tampa, where the grouper would hang out and eat the barnacles. That's, it's a cluster of pilings.
Cluster of.
Pilings.
Pilings.
Is a dolphin.
Piling.
Correct.
Like.
Several, pilings.
Just like with, like, with nothing attached to them?
Well, sometimes, you know, it depends on where it is, but.
Or if at the end of a pier, you had three of them instead of one.
Correct, as a safety barrier. Yes.
Wow, interesting.
But your new LDR does not include the term dolphin, does it?
No, sir.
Right. You're going to call it a piling.
Okay.
We're going to use the industry standard term, which is a piling or pilings.
So dolphins, a dolphin is bad, I mean, you, you, you're trying to avoid dolphins?
You don't want to run into it.
It depends on the use, and dolphins are typically used more at a port or at a wharf, where you have this major space that you're trying to protect with these large clusters of pilings, because you have larger vessels moving in and out of the waterway. We don't have dolphins, we don't have a need for dolphins in the city of Delray Beach.
Okay.
Picture of a dolphin for you.
Okay, cool. I mean, the biggest thing I'm thinking of is like the Lady Atlantic, and what, like, when she, when she pulls up to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To, at the dump station, you know, along the, and, and, and that's our public marina, by the way, right there, that, which is, you know, freshly renovated and spectacular. I mean, that's, I don't know, I'm, uh, to me, all I'm thinking about is the Army Corps of Engineer and the, the things within it, and, it's because, all I know, I don't know the stuff on Lake Ida, private piers and.
Yeah, we're not on the water.
But it sure seems to me that it's, that as a waterfront property owner, and if I get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to build something that I submit to them, and then somehow the city says, no, 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 not so fast. I, I mean, I find that kind of hard to believe, so, apparently you're trying to help that process somehow?
We're trying to alleviate it so that it stops happening.
Eliminate it.
Yeah, eliminate it. Right now, they go to the state, get all, jump through all the hoops, and then they come to the city and say, nope, start over.
And I'm the one who has to make the phone call that says, hey, your project's too big, you have to get relief, here's how we can do that.
So if somebody along the intercoastal is filing for a permit, who do they, who do they file the permit with first?
So, they have to file with the Department of Environmental Protection for a regulatory, a self-exempt regulatory permit, and then depending on their location along the ICW, they have to seek, um, additional federal regulatory approval.
Army Corps of Engineers?
From the Army Corps of Engineers, yes.
And.
But DEP tells you whether or not you need Army Corps approval first.
And then, let's say, so then, let's say that they've gone through those two steps, when does the city of Delray get the shot at revealing?
When they come in for building permit? Because they still have to get, so the accessory structure is still associated with a use that's within our jurisdiction, so the structure has to be reviewed, if they have plumbing, if they have electrical, we need to look at setbacks.
The Army Corps of Engineer cannot issue the permit, they can only offer an opinion on whether or not it meets the proper criteria?
Sort of, there's two layers to that. So, the Army Corps of Engineers ultimately does issue their own permit through their own regulatory sector. It's out of the Jacksonville office, and it's a federal, it's a federal review that is included with your DEP approval. So if you, if you live on the ICW, right, and, say you live over on Seasage, and you want to build a dock and a seawall and all that stuff, right? So, you have to hire your contractor, get your drawings. The contractor applies with DEP first, and then, depending on the location of said proposed structures, they make the recommendation as to whether or not federal regulatory review is required or not.
DEP makes that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then, if they say, yes, you need federal regulatory review, they give you all the information, you go to the Army Corps of Engineers with your same drawings, you say, hey, this is where I live, this is what I'm going to do.
Right.
They review it, say, okay, great, then, once you get all of those documents and all of that, then you come to the city and apply for a building permit. And in several cases in the last three years, said structures, even though DEP and Army Corps, like, looks great, because our standards are so strict, they require relief. Whether it be in the form of a variance or a waiver, depending on the proposed structure, the location of proposed structures. So, I took it upon myself to read what DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers and South Florida Water Management District require, and took it with Ms. Rebecca, and we just cut everything out and made it similar, so that once you get your federal and state approval, you come into us, you meet your setbacks, you sign the right paperwork to show us you're either property owner, representative, and.
But that makes a lot of sense, because.
Off you go.
That's a federal agency.
Exactly.
How in the world could Delray say to a federal agency?
That's what we're fixing.
We're fixing that.
The code was written originally in 1995, so.
Assuming we don't have to make a motion to extend the meeting. I make a motion to recommend approval to the City Commission.
Wait, well, don't, did we hear from everyone? I just want to make sure we hear from everyone.
I have nothing. Do you have anything to say? No. There don't tree.
Was that a joke?
There's no trees on the dock.
Um, I have a question on the 25%.
Yes, sir.
When you listed all the agencies controlling the canals, you didn't mention Lake Worth Drainage District.
You said it.
You said it.
You said it.
You said, you said, South Florida Water Management District, different organization. Uh, Lake Worth Drainage District, as its name implies, does all the side canals and the finger canals, right? Are they included in this?
Yes, sir.
So, some of those canals are very, very narrow, and the 25%, if extended from both sides, could prevent some.
You have to maintain 50% of the waterways access.
But if 50% of 25 feet is, is not maybe enough space, but the other part of the question is, you have the horizontal portion, or the parallel portion, I'm sorry, and then you have the finger pier coming out from that. Where do you start counting the 25%?
That's my question.
I'm sorry, I forget, I said.
Yeah, no, good, I want to hear the answer.
In other words, do you count the, do you count the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When you have the finger pier coming out from a dock.
Yeah.
Do you include the, the dock with the finger pier in counting the 25%?
Yes, because it's protruding off the property line, so that wouldn't be included in the entire calculation.
That's the right answer.
Off the property line or the, like, the bulkhead?
It depends if you have a seawall or not, if, but it would be from the wet face of the property line.
Okay, okay, okay. So, some of these canals are, like, 20 feet wide.
They would be required to get their approval from Lake Worth Drainage District, DEP, or whoever maintains the waterway. We would not issue the permit unless that was included in their dismissal, we can't. So that's part of why we're codifying that approval being required as part of the.
It would just seem to me that, that, given that the different reasons for the canals, and the different scales of the canals, that there might need to be some flexibility in that, in that as well.
Lake Worth Drainage District does not allow for finger piers or structures of that nature, they only allow for marginal docks that protrude from the sidewall of the canal, and for boat lifts that only extend out, if I'm not mistaken, 15 or 20 feet from the embankment itself. They do not allow protruding structures into the canals.
I'm trying to remember all the piers I have boated by, I, I think you're right, I don't think they're.
We don't have very many piers in, in the city, right? I mean, I mean, you know.
Marina, you mean?
How many dolphins?
No, no, piers.
Oh, yeah, we've got lots.
How many dolphins have you seen?
Not one.
You ready? Can we have a motion, please? Motion to approve, recommend approval of the City Commission on an ordinance number 30-dash-25, a city-initiated amendment to amend certain zoning districts in Article 4.4 Base Zoning District for consistency with Article 7.9, by adopting new definitions for docks, finger piers, marinas, and dolphins in Appendix A definitions, by finding that the amendment and approval thereof is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and meets the criteria set forth in Land Development Regulations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika, and Ms. Miller, would you please call the roll?
Jim Charnd?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yeah.
Deidre Stone?
Yes.
Roger Cope?
Yes.
Price Patton?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder.
Yes, okay, that's passed, seven to nothing.
The second ordinance, number 3025, we would need a vote on that as well.
Second vote, recommend approval of the City Commission ordinance number 30-dash-25, isn't that the same number?
Oh, dude, I think he did 30, and I think we need to do 12.
12, yep.
Oh, is that not on, it's a different, oh, I missed that, sorry. Recommend approval by the City Commission ordinance number 12-dash-25, a city-initiated amendment, Article 7.9, docks, dolphins, finger piers, and boat lifts, repealing and replacing the existing regulations in their entirety by finding that the amendment and approval thereof is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and meets the criteria set forth in Land Development Regulations.
Yes, second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Katz, second by Mr. Charnd, call the roll, please, Ms. Miller.
Jim Charnd?
Yes.
Mitch Katz?
Yes.
Deidre Stone?
Yes.
Roger Cope?
Yes.
Price Patton?
Yes.
Judy Malika?
Yes.
Gregory Snyder.
Yes, and that passes seven to nothing.
I did mess up that, because I should have repealed it first and then passed the second one, but I always go down the last page.
Yeah, never mind. That's good. Now we can go to 9B. When we get some different, what we don't, what we do.
There's nothing on AC?
9B.
We appreciate the patience of the board on this lengthy.
We still have the whole agenda.
Agenda, we've had, uh, these three amendments are all city-initiated, but there's a lot of private actions that are dependent on them, so we, we appreciate the opportunity to go through these. So, just like the, okay, I'm reading into the record, uh, file number PZ-000166-dash-225, it's an amendment to the LDR for our, um, regulations about lots of record. And, uh, like the previous amendment, which is intended to make life easier for our citizens, um, this is brought forth in the same spirit. So, there are multiple sections that we are amending as part of this ordinance, uh, to get to where we need to go. Uh, so this all goes back to, um, lots of record, which are anything that's a platted subdivision, so within the city, most of the city is platted. Now, if you have new development, you're required to plat. And there are two, two issues, uh, with this, so the way that the rule is applied now is causing, um, issues due to the citywide rezoning in 1990. Um, minimum requirements for lot dimensions were adopted that didn't match the lot sizes of many lots that existed, either by plat or by an extended history of use. Um, those, uh, will colloquially refer to as de facto lots of record, they're not platted, but for several generations, they have been held in that form, either undeveloped or with the structure on it. So this is particularly an issue in the R1A zoning districts, which are mostly within the northwest and the southwest neighborhoods. So, if you are a non-conforming lot of record, um, a non-conforming lot is one that was legally created, but now it doesn't meet the development standards. We do provide an out in Section 414, where if it's at least 50 feet wide, you can use it for any income level. If it's at least 4,000 square feet, greater than 40 feet in width, but less than 50, it has to be developed as workforce housing. Um, if you do not want to develop it as workforce housing, you would need to seek a waiver from commission, and we've had a number of those. Um, you may need to seek a waiver from the minimum lot dimensions if you are doing a tear down and a rebuild, or, um, a variance for building setbacks, because the setbacks that were adopted in conjunction with these lot sizes are calibrated for larger lots than those that have been in existence since the 20s, often, the 1920s. Um, or you also have the option to acquire and combine adjacent properties through a plat to meet minimum lot requirements. Um, so, uh, before we go to the next slide, so this, um, creates several issues, as we've seen as waivers have come forward. Um, people who own a lot that had a structure on it that was perfectly fine per these, these rules that are, per the configuration that was adopted in the plat, they need to get relief to even rebuild their own home. Um, so that, that has happened before, so for these lots of record, this is certainly an issue, and then there's, the issue is additionally compounded if you were never platted. Um, for, uh, Jim Crow-related reasons in the northwest and southwest, many of those lots were never platted, so even though they have historical ownership, it's restricting the ability of the owners to use them. So, um, this is the chart that shows for the R1A zoning district what the required lot dimensions are versus existing lot dimensions, so 7,500 square feet is the minimum for R1A zoning, but a lot of the lots are between 4,000 and 7,000 square feet, and the interior lot width is a lot wider than a lot of the lots that exist. Um, 40 to 50 feet is very common, um, and then again, as, as I noted before, if you are applying the minimum setback requirements, it becomes, um, very difficult. So it could result in a scenario, if you had a corner lot, and you factored in that, um, the setback in the lot width, you could end up with a house that was only about 17 feet wide, which is about the same as the length of a parking space, a common parking space. So it's, it's definitely, um, a challenge in, um, these R1A zoned properties in, um, especially in the northwest and the southwest. Uh, this map, which may be a little hard to read, and the resolution that it came out from, um, the report it came from, we did a study on accessory dwelling units, which, um, we will be bringing regulations forth in this neighborhood for accessory dwelling units, but, um, those require some more, um, some more regu- regulations to be written before we bring that to you, but as you can see on this, hopefully you can see based on the size of the legend, um, a lot of these R1A lots in the northwest, southwest neighborhood are not typical lot dimensions. Um, the RM zoned properties within this area, again, are not typical either, some because, like, you see Auburn Trace there, and then there's others, um, of just south of, uh, West. Some, because like you see Auburn Trace there, and then there's others of just south of West Atlantic Avenue. But with the exception of the properties in that purple and pink, they don't meet the minimum lot widths. Or, most of them do not. So, and this as well here, it's a, a map of the single-family zoned properties within the northwest and southwest, and it shows how many parcels are less than the seventy-five hundred square feet. And as you can see, it's, it's a huge number. Yeah, the green is those that do not meet the minimum lot size.
Tear my house down.
Yeah. So, this again, Osceola Park is one neighborhood which is a platted neighborhood that this non-conforming lots of record issue comes up with a lot. They're platted lots that don't meet the minimum lot dimensions. This platted area on the west side of Northwest Eighth Avenue, they were all platted. It's forty by one hundred and thirty-six foot lots. So, even though they could be developed because they were platted, there's that restriction for, they could only be developed as workforce housing. So, if you had a property owner that may have owned this across generations, and maybe they want to pass it on to an heir that is not, could not income-qualify because they've become successful, it limits the ability to pass this on unless you take it through the waiver process. So, and then again, this shows some of the issue with the meets and bounds lots. The Town of Lynton Platte, which was recorded in nineteen ten, you can see Atlantic Avenue and Swinton there in the yellow. Whereas some of these blocks with the small rectangles were ones that they actually platted out the entire block. But then a lot of the rest of this was just left as large blocks. And in these neighborhoods is where you commonly see meets and bounds descriptions. And we require all development to go on a platted lot or a lot of record. So, just to quickly go through, if you have a lot of record and it's at least fifty feet, you could just go straight to the Building Department, get your house permitted, and move along. If you have a lot of record that's less than fifty feet but at least forty, you could develop it as market rate if you get a waiver. Or, but you also, you don't have to plat it, and you could go straight to building permit. If you're going to do it as workforce, it's a little easier, you just go straight to building permit. For these unplatted lots, the meets and bounds lots, they would all have to be platted. If you are wanting to develop an unplatted lot that adheres to the district standards, plat and then building permit. But if you have one that doesn't meet that longstanding, the longstanding configuration doesn't meet the standards, then you go for a waiver before you could actually go for your building permit. So, it's difficult for many owners of lots of record, but also even more difficult for those who own a unplatted lot. And so, this amendment is an attempt to make, to give people more autonomy and the right to develop their property that they have owned or inherited. And I think it would be, we as staff think it would really contribute to the wealth building, especially in the north and southwest neighborhoods where we, we bump into this issue a lot, where people are ready to pass on a lot to an heir and develop it. But there's a long process they need to go through before it. So, I do want to highlight here, in the staff report and in the ordinance, I had posted two different definitions. And so, I would welcome board feedback at the end. So, we had talked about maintaining the lot of record definition as we have it, where it's, it's only platted, or the top definition, where we would expand the definition to include any parcel of land defined by meets and bounds that was previously developed and has existed in its current configuration since October first of nineteen ninety, that magic number when the, there was the citywide rezoning. So, Palm Beach County does take the route that you see on the top definition. The bottom definition is more of a conservative approach to how we would address this. So, then, these are existing definitions that were relocated, or sorry, the top one, for non-conforming lot of record, lawfully created but doesn't comply to the minimum standards. And then we are looking to adopt a new definition for legacy property, which would be any parcel of land defined by meets and bounds that has existed in its current configuration since nineteen ninety, that has been under the same, the ownership of the same family for a minimum of thirty years. And then that status would expire if it was sold outside of the family. Just a quick note, we're rewording a lot of the, the language for clarity. I think staff has really struggled in trying to explain and interpret to members of the development community what this means, because whoever wrote this in the nineties was very verbose and not directly to the point. So, I think in this regard, it's going to improve the process for our development community. And then also in this section, currently, a waiver is required if an owner doesn't want to develop the forty to fifty-foot lot as workforce housing. And if there were two adjoining lots that were developed with one house, and the owner desired to split it back into two, they would have to go for a waiver for both lots. So, we are looking to revise this section so that if a property was previously developed, it could be developed with a single-family residence without being subject to the workforce housing requirements. But for the lots where they may be adjoining under the same ownership, we're looking to require half of the units to be workforce. And this change is not proposed because staff is not concerned with, with workforce housing and affordable housing, but just simply because the regulation as it was written isn't working as it was intended to. So, we needed to look at how we could continue to make the properties usable within this neighborhood especially. Again, okay, so that, and then this is another significant section that we were looking at here. We were preparing regulations specifically for legacy properties. So, any legacy property could be developed or redeveloped, whether it had previous development or not, for a member of the family without being subject to the workforce housing requirements. And they could use the plat exemption process to, to make it more of a formal lot, rather than going through the full plat process, which is quite complicated and requires surveys and drainage drawings and a professional, whereas the plat process is not a far reach. Plat exemption process is not a far reach from the survey you would need to build anyway. And then we're also, throughout the north and southwest neighborhood, if you're providing workforce housing, or if it's a legacy property, we are expanding some of the reduced setbacks that were previously available to allow these properties to have a setback that's more appropriate to the configuration of the property. And again, we are just making, in our workforce section, which is primarily devoted to incentive areas, we added these incentives here about setback relief for the provision of workforce housing to make it more easily accessible and to add the breadcrumbs throughout our LDR. We really think that this is a way to give private property owners more right to use their property, whereas it's, there's inequity in how the regulations are structured currently. And so, this, this allows people who have that vested ownership right to use them more effectively. And then we have policies about using innovative planning practices to, to incentivize a diversity of housing types throughout several elements. And I know you guys have been here for quite a long time, so I'll wrap it up. But if you have any questions, I would be happy to take them.
What'd you just say?
Yeah.
Were you looking for guidance on some of that language where you had a choice between two?
Yes, so I think, I mean, we like a recommendation, and it could be a recommendation with direction on things like this. But yeah, I think this one was one where we were looking at whether we should take the really conservative or the more liberal path.
So, in this staff report, it says a lot of record.
Where is that?
Does, does, when I read this, I got the impression that it could be a lot of record. A meets and bounds lot could be a lot of record.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we did, we posted two versions incorrectly. So, I think the one version went where we actually say you are a lot of record if you can prove the ownership. Whereas the other one, so, you, it would still give a path to use it, but I think maybe the top definition would give more leeway, because once you're deemed a lot of record.
A lot of record is a part of a subdivision recorded in office of the clerk of blah, 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 blah. A parcel of land defined by meets and bounds that was previously developed and has existed in its current configuration. Okay, so that does say.
So, my question is, why does it differentiate between a lot and number one, and then meets and bounds and number two? Are they not one and the same?
No, so whereas the current definition only would call it a lot of record if it was recorded in a subdivision plat, that top definition would really try to expand it and say, we could also call you a lot of record if you can show this history of ownership in your meets and bounds lots.
So, why wouldn't we want to do that one?
Yeah, I think we do.
It depends on whether or not we think it's important to have basically what's a boundary plot through the plat exemption process. It does add a hurdle. It's.
The hurdle being proof of ownership.
I think as we were discussing this, we viewed that as maybe less of a hurdle as still even having to apply for the plat exemption. It is a seven hundred and fifty dollar application. A plat is fifteen hundred dollars or thirty-five hundred. The documents you need to prepare, you may need a professional to help submit them, or you may be able to do it by yourself. But if you're planning on building a house, you would have a survey anyway. So, it's not too much of a step further to have a surveyor do the boundary survey to go with the plat exemption, but it is an expense, for sure.
But the first one would be only the seven hundred and fifty dollar expense, right? With the first option.
Well, and then we would also look for feedback from the board on whether the board thinks it's important to require plat exemption or to just allow someone who can prove that ownership to proceed with the development.
Less regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I think, to me, it's, it's crazy that it took thirty-five years. Especially when we're looking at why. Yeah. Bosses are the way that they are. So, the least restrictive route, in my opinion, is probably the best. And if it requires waivers or exemptions, I'm fine with that personally. I agree.
I agree with that, if I could speak, yeah. The what, what I think, what I thought was trying to happen here is to allow people to use their property more easily. The property that they own, it doesn't necessarily, there's a bunch of rules about being platted and blah, 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 before you can do anything with your, with your non-conforming lot. And what, what I assume you were trying to do, what I think we want to do, is enable people who, if, if that lot's been there like that, even though it's not platted in the Palm Beach County Circuit Court, et cetera, it's still a lot, and it still belongs to the people, and they ought to be able to build on it or do whatever they want with it. I, I mean, within, not anything they want, because there's certain things about, if you have two, one should be workforce. But in general, I think we're saying the top lot, the top one is.
Okay.
Yep.
Is what, is what we would prefer. Is there any other confusion in this that we need to discuss?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's really just, there's two types of lots of record scenarios that we are trying to address here. The one where it doesn't make sense to continue to force waivers for lots of record that are actually lots of record. And the other would be to start deeming property that is not considered a lot of record, a lot of records, so that it can be more developable.
Yeah, that's what I would say. So, so how do we, how do we express that in a motion?
Well, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
There are, I noticed in the, the map on page three, it looks like the entire West Settlers Historic District is, is not covered. Now, some of the lots look as small as some of the other lots. I don't know if there was a conscious thing to not include the West Settlers District?
I need to compare it to the map of the West Settlers Historic District boundary. So, for the.
The, the green map.
The map on page three.
Green and yellow.
Yeah, so, on this one, I asked our map tech to look only at the single-family zoned ones. So, if, let's see, no. So, we'll have to look at that to make sure that it's picked up if those are. So, I, I didn't compare it, so let me make a note to do that.
And then this applies citywide, right?
It would apply citywide, but mostly applicable, I think, in the north and south. And at this point, we haven't looked at extending that liberalization of the lots of record for meets and bounds parcels to commercial properties. I think we would still require them to do a plat. But for these properties, it makes sense, given the history of the.
But you're talking about this, this change in the LDR is applying only west of Swinton?
No, anywhere that it is.
Only citywide, right?
Anywhere that it's, yes, citywide, but mostly you would see it as applicable in either RM or R one A zoning.
Because they're in, in our historic districts, which are older.
Mm-hmm.
When they're maybe in forty, fifty, forty foot wide.
Yes.
Then, that's, they'll, they'll be affected.
They would be, they wouldn't have to seek relief, although I can't recite the historic process off the top of my head. You probably could, but I think we, we have a lot of provisions already built into the code so that if there's a house that's on a lot that's non-conforming, if it's historic, there's a lot more leeway already afforded. So, it may not be as important for those properties as some of the ones here, but it would certainly apply to them.
And setbacks would be affected?
The, whatever was applicable to a historic property would be.
But this doesn't affect setbacks.
Part of the, let's see if I can go back to that slide.
Why would it do?
So, we are looking within the northwest and southwest to allow relaxed setbacks for some of these non-conforming. So, if, say you were wanting to build somewhere else, and you just wanted to build your house bigger than the development regulations allowed, you would have to get relief. This is more a regulation designed to, to fit better to the properties. Like, when we've talked about this internally, we've talked a lot about how we're all for enforcing the rules that they make sense, but in cases like this, where there's the mismatch between conditions on the ground and the, and the regulations, it makes sense to look at a wholesale.
Like several other people said, I'm all for making the rules easier on owners. Thank you.
One other thing, I thought I saw a discrepancy in the definition for legacy, legacy property that you have on page six here, versus what was on the screen.
Oh, let me go back to, um.
Legacy property.
Unfortunately, we ended up, we, we had some feedback from the public that had some changes. So, I think some of the slides and what was published may have changed, but we will certainly make sure that we correct it. Was there one definition or the other that you preferred?
In the legacy property, I think, up there you had a, a minimum of thirty years, and you had the date October first, nineteen ninety.
Okay.
In some respect, but it's not here in page six.
Okay, okay, we'll make sure.
Same family.
But it, it, it had a qualified date up there, October.
Oh, I see.
Okay, I'll make sure to get that.
Yeah, that's kind of weird.
How we arrive at thirty years.
That's a good question.
Is there any question of rezoning?
Yeah.
There's three years of rezoning.
Mm-hmm, for a recommendation.
Does a motion have to specify the choice of verbiage for the, what's a lot of record?
I think you, like, you could say recommend approval with the language that deems a meets and bounds lot, is a lot of record.
Why don't you put the, the two things up there?
Okay, no, not there.
That's not it, it was the two, that's it.
Oh, wait, no.
No, not that one.
There we go.
Do you want me to take the gavel?
Yeah, we'd like, we, before you start, we want the top one, is that?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Okay, yeah, take it, Bryce.
Mr. Snyder, you're making the motion?
Oh, am I?
I don't think he wants to.
I'll do it, I don't care. Let me find the motion page first. I got it here, no, I don't, yeah, I do.
He did, he passed it to Mr. Bass.
Okay, I move the recommend approval to the City Commission Ordinance number twenty-five twenty-five. The city init- The city initiated amendment to the Land Development Regulations, amending Section 1.3.2, non-conforming lots of record. Section 4.1.4, use of lots of record. Section 4.3.1, application of district regulations. Section 4.4.3, single-family residential R1 district. Section 4.8, other incentives. And Appendix A, definitions to amend the regulations to the use of lots of record. Finding that the approval, that the amendment and approval thereof is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the criteria set forth in the Land Development Regulations, with the condition that the definition of a lot of record will be a lot that is, one, a part of a subdivision recorded in the office of the clerk of the court, clerk of the Circuit Court of Palm Beach County, Florida; or, two, a parcel of land defined by meets and bounds that was previously developed and has existed in its current configuration since October 1, 1990. Whenever a portion of an existing lot of record is replanted and contained in a new plat, that portion of the lot on the original plat that has been replanted and included in the new plat shall not be considered a lot of record and shall not be presumed to satisfy the definition of a lot in the LDR or in Florida Statute 177 dot 031.
Second. One slight change, you said Section 4.8, I think you meant 4.78.
Okay, 4.7, 4.7.8. Call for the roll. Call for the roll.
Ms. Miller, maybe we have the...
Read it all over again, since you made this statement.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second, I second it pretty quick.
It was seconded by Mitch and a motion by Mr. Gregg.
Jim Charnd.
Yes.
Mitch Katz.
Yep.
Deidre Strawn.
Yes.
Roger Coe.
Yes.
Price Patton.
Yes.
Judy Malika.
Yes.
Gregory Snyder.
Yes.
I think I know what you just did.
Can you repeat it?
No.
It's for the last item.
So you could read that up there, right?
I got my glasses on.
I'm using my reading glasses, I don't have your long...
No, I get... Okay.
Okay, I'm going to be really quick on this, and...
Exactly what's up here.
This is the one you don't have on your thing.
Yeah, there's a replace...
There's slight amendments to it.
So what are they?
Yeah. They're not, I don't think they're like substantive changes at all, but...
Here's a copy of this.
So this item 9C, another amendment to the LDR. It's to make a state mandated change to our reasonable accommodation procedures. Reasonable accommodations are typically applied to a community residence type situation that is, for some very fact-based reason, needs a deviation from the rules regulating the use. And there's a process that we already have on the books, actually, to grant, or to review and grant reasonable accommodations. But the state passed through SB 954, regulations that are, must be adopted by January 1st, 2026, and reading into the record file, PZ 325, 2025. So again, this, the state required that we adopt these changes. The city is very fortunate to have very extensive regulations governing community residence use. So this slide here just shows the changes that we are required to make. Some of these we already do procedurally, and then the other changes just change the timeframes. They're more generous than we actually have, or giving ourselves. And then things like any objections, any rejections have to be evidence-based for denial. And a clause for automatic approval if the city fails to act. So we do have the findings for LDRs, LDR amendments, but in this case, we don't really have a choice if we didn't like it. So Danny here, or myself, can answer any questions you might have.
I have no questions.
Anybody?
Why can't someone with us?
I have one thing, and it's my typical type of thing. If you go to the part of the ordinance where it's, in the ordinance, it's parentheses five on page four. And if you go down after, after, let's see, it's changed from, where are we? Oh, I think that, I think this is actually corrected already. No.
It may have been corrected in your new draft.
If additional, let's see, receipt signed by the recipient. This, my correction's already been made. You needed to insert additional information in the sentence, and it's already there. Please.
Recommend approval to the City Commission of Ordinance Number 37-25. The city initiated amendment to Section 2.411, Relief Subsection E, Request for Accommodation of the Land Development Regulations to update its procedures for handling and processing requests for reasonable accommodations in order to support, to comport with recent changes to state law adopted in Senate Bill 954, 2005, finding that the amendment and approval thereof... Should that be 2025?
That should say 2025.
Yeah, it's 202, I was gonna say, 2025, finding that the amendment and approval thereof is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the criteria set forth in Land Development Regulations.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Katz, second by Ms. Malika, would you read the roll, please?
Jim Charnd.
Yes.
Mitch Katz.
Yes.
Deidre Strawn.
Yes.
Roger Coe.
Yes.
Price Patton.
Yes.
Judy Malika.
Yes.
Gregory Snyder.
Yes, that passes seven to nothing. Okay. Staff comments.
Nothing else. Thank you all for your long-suffering, working through the agenda. And just quickly, you have a list of all the board meeting days for 2026 in front of you, so just can mark your calendars, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board attorney comments.
I have nothing. Thank you for being here.
We pass tonight?
No reprimand for me tonight.
Everyone did. No, I thought about it, but I didn't say it.
Board comments.
I do have something, and I know we're late, but I, it's very important, I think. So last meeting, we talked about gun ranges. We learned that in our industrial and in our MIC, gun ranges are allowed without any conditional use whatsoever. And the industrial, it's not such a problem, because it doesn't abud properties, but the other district where it's allowed, it does. So somebody could put a gun range in tomorrow without any conditions whatsoever. So I would like to ask, for us as a board, to ask the city to do a zoning in progress so that any future, any applications will not be accepted until it's looked at, and that we, that they look at amending that to make some type of, just a recommendation from us to the commission, that they take some action here.
We all agree.
Because we, they didn't see it, because it never got to them, so...
I spoke to Anthea about that, and she said that would have to come from the commission. So I did speak to the commission about that, or a couple of them. And then I think I'm going to make public comment tomorrow.
Okay, if I can make it, I'll come and make public comment, too, if I can...
Oh, yeah, well, I'm gonna make it first.
All right, but I'll try to come as well, but I don't, I was gonna try to come and talk about something else, but...
And I may be mistaken, but my belief is she said that's the process, that the commission had to instruct Mr. Moore, and Mr. Moore would instruct the department.
Okay. We could recommend that.
The planning and zoning board...
I mean, we are the planning board.
Or they do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to make a motion, recommend zoning in progress.
Hold on a second. Um, zoning, hold on.
We're not passing anything, all we're saying is, we're asking staff to say something to the commission.
No, no, I know you're allowed to make recommendations, but there are specifics to what, like, what you can make a recommendation on.
It's, it's our Land Development Regulations.
I think to her point, I don't know that you could recommend that they do a zoning in progress.
I'm just gonna recommend they, they are made aware of this.
I mean, I think if you chose, if you wanted to make the action as an entire board, I think you'd have to vote, and I'm not 100% sure that you can do that. If you wanted to individually do as Anthea told and Ms. Malika, I think that would be the clearest path that we can tell you, you definitely can do at this point.
You want to make an amendment to the LDR? Is that what you want?
We want to ask the city commission to look at making amendment to the LDRs.
We need some kind of regulation. There's not, every other city has it.
There's nothing. And especially, the industrial doesn't worry me as much as the MIC, because that does abud properties. I sent a video from the gun range owner of a very trained gun range instructor who shot himself in the parking lot by accident. Well, that's, if you can accidentally shoot off a gun in a parking lot, that next-door neighbor, that's not a good thing.
So here's the thing, typically when I see those kind of recommendations, it's coming from like an advisory board, where their only role would be to make recommendations. In this case, like, you all just made recommendations on LDRs, but they were city-initiated, or they're privately initiated.
Right.
So I don't know if you can, on your own volition...
Listen, well, I think we can, we can say it, and then they say they can ignore it.
In my past experience, that's exactly what we've done.
Yeah.
We've made a request of staff to do a report to the city manager, and the city manager gives it to the mission.
Right. That's the way it's supposed to work, because it's the, from the people, we are the appointed board to look at our zoning rules.
So I think we can check in to confirm...
I think you don't even need to vote.
If so, the mechanism we communicate that through...
But I think if there's a consensus from all of us, that should be enough for them to pay them.
Is there, can I just ask, is there consensus?
Consensus, right, not a vote, because we didn't...
How many are in favor? Aye?
Aye.
There you go.
And then I'll confirm if it can be done.
Thank you.
I just don't know.
Because of the timing, that we just learned about this, and, I mean, it's, because it could open up a bag of worms now that we've exposed this at that last meeting.
You might talk to Kelly about it, because I think she's the one that kind of led it years ago.
That's all I had, sorry.
Okay.
Nothing.
Rebecca, next meeting?
The next meeting is December 15th.
Okay.
Ready, Roger?
Coming. Let's go.
Jared.
Let's get out of here.
Three guys sitting here talking. How come that's the case, Mitch? How come they came into the problem with that?